An open meeting, right around the corner as you come in the door is the actual open meeting act. If you would, I'm gonna ask that you stand with us for a moment of silence and as well the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll continue with roll call. Frankliss?
Here.
Langy?
Here.
Merrill?
Here.
Claussen?
Here.
Murin?
Here.
Moaning?
Here.
Faust?
Here.
File?
Here.
Okay. Under action, I need approval of the consent agenda as provided your counsel.
So move, Your Honor.
Second.
We have a motion with a second to approve the consent agenda. Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
And as well, I need approval of the full agenda, please.
So move, Your Honor.
Second.
Motion with a second to approve the full agenda. Again, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
Okay. Tonight first on, under special presentations, is a proclamation for Read Aloud to a Child Month. Whereas literacy is the fundamental building block of all learning and is essential to the growth and the success of every child in our city, and whereas reading to children enlarges their vocabulary and enhances their listening skills, thereby fostering intellectual growth and a more positive attitude toward reading, and whereas reading to a child is a simple and priceless act that benefits both adult and child, positively contributing to family literacy and strengthening the bond between a parent and a child, and whereas when parents assume the responsibility for children's literacy, making a commitment to reading for 15 minutes a day, children become more healthy, resilient, and inquisitive, and whereas Read Aloud to Your Child for 15 minutes a day is a nationally recognized program that has been in existence for more than 25 years, and whereas Read Aloud Norfolk, the Norfolk Public Library, Norfolk area schools, and other organizations representing parents, teachers, librarians, and concerned citizens advocate for reading aloud to children because it fosters healthy interaction between adults and children, and whereas reading aloud to children will enhance family literacy and the well-being of young people throughout our city. Now therefore be it resolved that I sue Fuqman, Mayor, the City of Norfolk, Nebraska by the power vested in me do hereby proclaim November 2015 as Read Aloud to a Child Month in the City of Norfolk and surrounding area, and I encourage all parents, teachers, librarians, and other caring adults to read aloud to a child. Mark, are you here? Well, you know what? We have someone from the Norfolk Public Schools that I would think would be more than appropriate in accepting this proclamation. Come on up, will you? All right.
I know you have the opportunity to probably listen to this often, so he does a great job with his program, and I can imagine that's probably one of his students. Do you have any comments to this group as far as the concept?
Yep, we wish reading aloud all the time is one of the greatest things you can do for your kids to make sure that they're on their way to a successful journey through school. So keep it up, keep it through, I encourage that. Thank you for your support of reading aloud.
Thank you. Okay. And next on the agenda is recognition of the 18 members of the third class of the Norfolk 101 Citizens Academy who have completed eight sessions learning about all the different divisions within the City of Norfolk. And with that, Diane, where are you to come forward? This is, as said, the third year that this has happened, and I think each and every one that's gone through this will tell you, for those of you that maybe question it or maybe want a little information, ask any one of these that are here tonight. I think they have found it to be very informative and certainly factual in what they have learned. So take over, Diane.
Right. This started in 2014, and it's called Norfolk 101 Citizens Academy. This is our third session. What they do, the participants actually commit to going for eight different sessions. They are three hours a session, and we cover all the divisions of the city. They go everywhere from the WPC plant to the water plant to the library, the police division, the fire division. They cover all the divisions of the city. And they listen to all of the division heads and staff who donate their time to come and explain all what it takes to do the, kind of the backstage of the City of Norfolk. So it's a great program, and I really commend the citizens who step up to take this because it's a lot of commitment on their, on their part, a lot of time that they put in to do this. And they actually, they, they complete assignments, and they, they look over the material before the meetings. It's, it's really kudos to the people who care about how the city runs and are very anxious to learn about it. So I'm excited to introduce our latest 18 members of Norfolk 101. So I'll let you present the certificates, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
And I will tell you this, Citizen 101 was Diane's idea from the very get-go, and I commend her. Do I have it? I see. Oh, probably right back there. That says please sign them?
Yes.
I see. Okay. But again, she has been the one that has made sure that this has become one of the things for us in the city. And I think it's been certainly, for myself, has been very informative of some of the questions that have been brought to us. And again, it's a three-hour commitment, eight weeks. So anybody that might have an interest, talk to any one of these people or Diane. So with that being said, some of yours, your first on our list here. So go forward. And then I think Diane's question is, is this person coming up, I guess? Yeah. And you get two.
No.
I took a, I took a nap.
No, I had two.
Double smart.
Did that, so you could show Frank every direction? He turned around.
Said you wore that 'cause you were gonna be here tonight. Said you wore that 'cause you were gonna be here tonight.
Very good. How about Terry? He's what, out here? He? Yeah, wait, wait. I know he's talking. Thanks, Jeff. Appreciate it. You're back, you're back. And Mike, you look, you look.
Jeff, it's a good thing and a bad thing sometimes.
What'd you think? Was it worth it?
Yes, very much.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Congratulations.
Enjoyed it.
Join us. Hi, you have your friends? You gotta stay up. Jared, I know you're here.
You need to fill out.
You can cover yourself.
Just write whatever you want.
Mike, if you don't listen to her, she'll take that back.
She will. Yes, she will.
Rest of the people, Bart.
Hi, how are you?
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Congratulations. And again, for your, you too. Dana? Certainly a little aware of what was on in the city, but I got a, we didn't sign.
I definitely did. Thank you.
I told them all tonight there would be a test. Seal yourself. Okay.
It's about water. It's about water.
You have a bigger division?
Well, everything was interesting, especially wastewater. There's so much going on there.
See? Wastewater.
That's where it's happening.
It's not wastewater.
You don't have one of those, you don't have a town.
That's right.
Right past it.
Might start charging a mission out there, and it'd be so popular.
I could put bunny ears in there.
Of course, I'm gonna go with my.
Antlers or bunny ears?
Very good. Glad to have you there.
Tina gets antlers.
Just in front of us.
I'll be darned. Yep.
And Adam, how? How about Ron, either? Here, please. What's your favorite one?
I like the Park, the Parkman, the Blue, the Horton. I like them all.
Even one?
If a son wants to photobomb them, he's supposed to pass that off.
Chris Rock? Michelle? So is it valuable? Absolutely. Oh, yeah.
We'll do it.
Yeah. Thank you. And Chris, what?
Get back. I'm gonna do the same thing.
Yeah.
The lady wants your pictures.
Did you bring your extra batteries?
Slip in there.
All right. Congratulations.
That's what you call a poor leader. Poor leader.
For your information, there's a, there's a, here.
Okay. Okay. I was gonna say now, nobody be bailing out 'cause we have an interesting meeting before us, so stick around. Now, we're gonna start off with a public hearing tonight. We have a public hearing on the appeal requested by Ross and Maggie Stoffer regarding conditional use permit 2015 PC-9 with the Planning Commission approval on a six-three vote, October 6, 2015, for Tel Aviv to have a communications tower at 2208 Elmer's Lane. I would like to open this public hearing, and, Val, are you opening this for us, talking to this a bit?
I can give some background on this. It came to the city's attention.
Yep, you're gonna have to be closer than that.
We'll pull it toward you. It came to the city's attention that the 2208 Elmer's Lane. Better? Did not have a conditional use permit. It's on.
Okay.
And so, we talked to Tel Aviv Tom Schofer, and we began the conditional use permit process. And as it says that on October 6, we did have an approved conditional use permit go through the Planning Commission as a six to three vote.
Okay. With that, I'm gonna look to, let's see, Ross, Maggie, we'll have you come forward, state your name for us, sign in.
I have signed in already.
Oh, you know this routine.
Well, I just hope I'm not gonna get any spam email because I had to list my email address here. My name's Ross Stoffer, and my wife Maggie and I are the owners of property that is the, our backyards are adjacent to the property where the tower is located. And Mayor, I, thanks for putting all the pressure on me about telling these individuals it's gonna be an interesting meeting, so now I'm gonna have to live up to that. I don't know if I can, but...
Oh, I think so.
Okay. I did point out a lot of things that I think are on pages 63 to 66 of your packet that you received. I'm not gonna go through all those with you today, but there are a couple of things that I wanted to point out. The first thing that I wanted to point out to you is, is on page 99 of your packet, there's a picture of what our backyard looks like with the tower located in the backyard. This is a picture of, from our deck, what our deck looks like, or what the view looks like from our deck. And also, we have a screened-in porch just right next to there. I also wanted to point out to you this, this shed that's right here in the picture. We did have a building permit for that shed. That was the first question I was asked by the Planning Commission about whether we had a building permit for that shed. And I did have one in 1994, if anybody wants to check on that. So we have my shed here that had the building permit, and here is the, here is the communications tower that did not have a permit. It has not had a permit since it's been located there in its present form in 2015, but it was there also in a prior form in 2004. And also, I wanna point out too, that of course that picture does show the different sizes of what would be considered a normal utility pole, the size of my shed, and of course then the communications tower that I believe is listed as being 70 to 80 feet tall. I also wanted to point out, if you look at page 73 of the, of your packet, you will also note that in 2004, in May of 2004, Mr. Schomer obtained a conditional use permit for a communications tower located on East Eisenhower Avenue. And then in August, I believe it was, of 2004, the same year, just a few months later, on page 71 of your packet, Mr. Schomer talks about that that's when this tower went, the predecessor of this particular tower went in. And Mr. Schomer does a lot of talking about utility pole, things of that nature. First of all, there was no existing utility pole, as he claims that there was. There was no existing utility pole in that backyard before he installed one. And we're not really talking about utility pole anyway, we're talking about a communications tower. the definition of what a tower is. And that definition says that, code section 27-2 of the zoning code, says that a tower is a structure situated on a site that is intended for transmitting and receiving television, radio, or telephone communication. And of course wifi is a radio communication, and wifi is transmitting and receiving that communication. So all of the things that have been constructed on this property have been communication towers. And utility pole really is irrelevant because it's a communication tower. Also, on page 71 of your packet, again, as well, this was part of the timeline that Mr. Schomer presented to the Planning Commission, and he talks about, under the August 2004 section, he said that we were of the understanding that because a tower was not constructed, that we were able to avoid any regulatory requirements. As I've indicated, that's exactly what happened. He constructed a tower. And here he's saying because a tower was not constructed, but in actuality, a tower was constructed. I'd also point out too, that, that this was done in August of 2004. We were gone on vacation at the time, there was no tower there when we left for vacation, when we came back, there was. And we had no knowledge, no idea that anything like that was, was happening. If you look at these things, if you look at page 73, the conditional use permit that Mr. Schomer obtained for the tower on East Eisenhower, and then look at all these other things that I pointed out to you, it appears clear that Mr. Schomer knew or should have known the requirements that were necessary for a tower to be constructed. He had gone through the process in May with the tower on East Eisenhower Avenue, but then he put this one up in the back of 2208 Elmer's Lane without any permits, without anything of the nature that he was required to do, and he should have known because, first of all, that's his business, and second of all, because he'd just gone through that process in May with the tower that he had gotten on East Eisenhower Avenue. Okay. So then, this particular tower, as I mentioned earlier, was put in in May of 2015. So the tower that was there before, which I believe Mr. Schomer indicated was like eight to 10 feet shorter, was taken down, and this tower was put in. This tower is much wider, and as you can see at the top, it has a lot larger structure at the top of the tower than the one that was there before. It's very much more noticeable than the one that was there before. The one that was there before was the height more of the normal, what's labeled in my, in my picture there, the normal utility poles, and then it had a mast antenna on the side of it, a mast pipe antenna on the side of it, which was, I don't know how big around it was, Mr. Schomer can probably tell you, but maybe four inches or so around that extended up from there. And then in, as was indicated earlier, because this tower was replaced, and also because of some things that happened in regards to how it was replaced, and I've listed that also in my comments about that the people who installed the tower came across our property to do it, they used electricity from our shed out there without our permission, we contacted the city about that tower being there, and then that's when an investigation was made. And in July, I believe it was July 2 of 2015, the Planning Department declared that that tower was illegal in that zoning, and then there was the requirement that Mr. Schomer had three options, and he chose the special, or the conditional use permit option to get that conditional use permit. I'm not, as I indicated, I'm not gonna go through all the arguments or all the things that I pointed out in my information I provided to you, but I think what you need to decide here today, the question's presented to you is, are the codes that the city has established, the building codes, the electrical codes, the traffic codes, are they codes that have meaningful enforcement, have meaningful penalties, or are they merely suggestions? Because at this particular point in time, by allowing that pole to stand, by allowing that tower to stand, there's been no consequence to Mr. Schomer for violating the codes that the city has for this period of time. The Planning Commission basically said that he would have to pay three times the fees that are required for the building permits and things of that nature. But if you look at that situation, and I have no idea how many customers, I think there was some mention of 12 to 15 customers that he has utilizing that tower, but if you look at what the cost of wireless internet is, certainly it doesn't take him very long to make up the difference of that three times, I mean, he would've had to pay one time that anyway, so it's only about $600 or $700. It wouldn't take very long at all for him to make that up by having this illegal tower there for that particular period of time and making the money off of the subscriptions that he is able to get because that tower is there. I would also point out to you, if you look at page 97 in your packet, there's a copy of a Norfolk Daily News article about what the Madison County Commissioners did when they were faced with a similar issue. If you look at that particular article, you'll see that a lot of the things that are involved in this particular issue were the same as in that particular situation as well. There was a, the zoning code was violated because it was a structure that was built too close to a gravel roadway, didn't have the proper setback amount. There was not even anybody from the public that was opposing the request for the change of zoning for that, or the conditional use permit for that particular application. However, it was the county representatives that stated that the people who put that building there should have investigated the regulations before, and researched those regulations before building that building. Very similar to here. The regulations, the zoning code should have been researched, and then it was, you know, Mr. Schomer had done in 2004, in May of 2004, he put up a tower and gotten a permit, so he knew what the regulations were. If not, he should have done those, just like they did in the, in the Madison County case. Also, if you look at that article, it was the county representatives who investigated, who presented information at the meeting, rebutted clarified claims made by those that were seeking the approval that the county representatives thought were misleading. In this particular case, basically, the burden has been placed on the citizens, myself and my wife, to basically present these things that are showing that there's a violation of the zoning. There would've been, nothing would've happened if we hadn't have called the city to let them know that this was going on. And I would just point out also that, I don't have this in anything in my materials that I've given out, but what I did call the city, one of the first people I talked to was John Koba, and he asked me, he said, "Well, how long's that tower been there?" I said, "Well, it was just put up yesterday." He says, "Well, I wondered, because I was coming down Sheridan Boulevard, and I could see it as I was going home." And of course, before, when the other tower was there, he didn't see it. But when this one went up, he could see it from Sheridan Boulevard as he was heading home. So that shows you a little bit of what the difference is between the two towers as well. And the last thing about that particular article on page 97 of the materials that you have is that the result of that hearing was is that the Madison County Commissioners does not deny the zoning request. And I think that there's indications in that article that the people that had built the building said it was gonna cost them $40,000 or so to move the building or to comply or something like that. But here is Madison County, just earlier this year, really close to where we are here, of course, we're located in Madison County, basically sending a message to people that you need to follow the zoning codes. And if you don't, there's substantial consequences. They could've avoided all of that by getting their zoning permit and doing all the things that they should've done before building, but they didn't. And they had all kinds of reasons why they didn't do it. They felt that they'd done most of their stuff in Platt County, and Platt County didn't require that, things of that nature. And Mr. Schomer's indicated some of those things as well in his situation, but the issue is, is he knew or should have known, and what's the consequence? What is the zoning codes, what do they mean? Do they mean something? Do they mean that something about you've got to follow those, you've got to follow them in the right order, just like I did with my permit for my shed that I built? Or can you go ahead and put something up, go ahead and have an economic benefit from that as you're operating it without the proper permits? And if you happen to get caught, then you can go ahead and pay the extra fees that are gonna be involved, but it's still not gonna be anywhere near the much you're gonna make off of having that illegal structure that's been put there in contradiction to what the zoning codes say should be done. So I feel that the city needs to send a message that you're not gonna allow that type of thing to happen. The city codes mean something. The traffic codes, the building codes, the zoning codes, they mean something. If they're not followed, there's gonna be a substantial consequence. If you don't send that message, then everybody out there who's thinking about building a shed, putting up a communications tower, doing something else that requires some type of zoning, may say, "Why bother with getting, going through the process? Why bother with getting a permit? Because I can go ahead and do it, and if I get caught, they'll let it stay anyway, and I'll still get all the benefit that I've had for all that period of time that I did it without the permit." So at some point in time, we need to step up and say, "These codes mean something. They have some type of penalties, they have some type of consequences if you're not gonna follow those codes, and this is the time to do it." Thank you for your attention. Does anybody have any questions?
Just say before you walk away, any questions in all council? Mr. Stoffer?
Question I would have is, when the first poll was put in in 2004?
Correct.
That, that was not pleasing to you at that time?
No, not really. A couple of things, you know, like I said, we had no idea why it was there, we didn't even know what it was for. And, you know, a couple of things, I mean, trying to be good neighbors, we didn't raise an issue at that time. Nobody came and talked to us about why it was there or what it was there for. We're trying to be, trying to be decent neighbors and didn't really raise the issue that much. But then when this one went up, there was so much of a drastic difference, as I indicated, you know, Mr. Koba saw... zoning codes, they mean something. If they're not followed, there's going to be a substantial consequence. If you don't send that message, then everybody out there who's thinking about building a shed, putting up a communications tower, doing something else that requires some type of zoning, may say, "Why bother with getting, going through the process? Why bother with getting a permit?" Because I can go ahead and do it, and if I get caught, they'll let it stay anyway, and I'll still get all the benefit that I've had for all that period of time that I did it without the permit. So at some point in time, we need to step up and say, "These codes mean something. They have some type of penalties, they have some type of consequences if you're not going to follow those codes, and this is the time to do it." Thank you for your attention. Does anybody have any questions?
Just saying before you walk away, any questions in all council? Mr. Stauffer?
Question I would have is, when the first pole was put in in two thousand and four?
Correct.
That was not pleasing to you at that time?
No, not really. A couple of things, you know, like I said, we had no idea why it was there. We didn't even know what it was for. And, you know, a couple of things, I mean, trying to be good neighbors, we didn't raise an issue at that time. Nobody came and talked to us about why it was there or what it was there for. We were trying to be decent neighbors and didn't really raise the issue that much. But then when this one went up, there was so much of a drastic difference, as I indicated, you know, Mr. Koba saw it from a long ways away, and he hadn't seen the other one, so he knew there was a big difference as well. And, you know, and I mean, it's also a thing, too, that, you know, again, the burden was on us at that point. I mean, it was, were we supposed to go over and knock on our neighbor's door and say, "What's that pole doing there?" I mean, it's something where, you know, I didn't, one of the things that I, I didn't measure how far away that pole is from our property, because I didn't want to trespass in our neighbor's yard to go and measure how far his pole is from our property. From the permit that was issued by the Planning Commission, I'm guessing it's around fourteen feet from our property line and not in the utility easement area. But, I mean, that's, I guess, kind of how we felt about it. We felt that, you know, tried to get along with our neighbors. We don't know why it's there. We didn't know if they had the proper permits or not. I mean, because it went up, and we didn't see it go up, we didn't know how it went up, we didn't know anything. We didn't know that maybe they had the proper permit, so we didn't say anything. But then when this one went up, that's when we contacted somebody, that's when we found out there had been no permits ever for that particular communication tower that was there in two thousand and four, or this one, and that's when we let the city know that we wanted to have that looked into.
Thank you.
Any other council questions for Russ?
Russ, that's NPPD utility easement, I assume, is that right?
No, it's not an easement. It's outside the--
No, I mean the easement that's there--
Oh--
An NPPD--
Yeah, it's NPPD, probably others as well, I'm not sure, but I know NPPD does have an easement that, you know, everybody has to give on the back of their property lines, yes, but this is outside the easement.
It is outside the easement.
Yes. It's not in the easement area at all. It's probably, well, there's a picture you can look at. Let's see. If you look at page one hundred in your packet, you can see where the utility easement is, you can see the pole, the utility pole that's there from NPPD, and you can see, I laid a three-foot yardstick down there, and you can see that it's, I don't know, I'm not good at estimating distances, but you can see that there's a distance there between the utility easement and where the communications tower is located. So it's not located in the easement at all. It's completely outside of it. Plus, I don't think it could be located there because it's not a utility.
I guess I'm curious as to whether NPPD signed off on the placement?
Well, they can't because it's not in their utility easement anyway. It's in the private property of the, of the Sudbecks who own that property. So it's not in the utility easement at all.
So is it to the north or to the south of the easement then?
It'd actually be to the east of the easement.
To the east of--
Yeah, this picture, the picture on the left of page one hundred is looking south. And if you want, if you look at, and I don't know if it's, this will be coordinated somewhat with, if you look at the, well, I don't know if I'll be able to, but there was a plat Well, I guess it doesn't coordinate too well, but if you look at page sixty, or page seventy?
Seven, seven zero?
I'm sorry?
Seven zero, is that what--
Yeah, seven zero, the overhead view of the area. Basically, that picture is kind of taking the same direction that the arrow is pointing. It's basically kind of standing on, well, actually, I hate to admit it, but I did trespass on, not on the Sudbeck property, but on, on another property as I took that picture, because that pole is probably that, that the arrow's pointing at in the picture, not on the map, but that's pointing at basically the pole that's kind of on the corner of my property. The property between my property on the right in that picture and the Sudbeck property on the left, twenty-two oh eight Elmer's Lane, where the communication tower is located. You can see it's not in the easement. I can't remember, you know, they would probably know how wide of an easement is on everybody's property since they've gone through the class. I don't know that right off.
Michelle?
Yeah, you said there was going to be a test.
I did.
There it is, there it is.
Any other questions in all for Russ?
No, for Russ, but Dennis, do you know what the easement width is out there, or can you tell off of your documents?
It would either be a five-foot side yard easement or a ten-foot rear yard easement.
This would be a side yard. It's not the rear yard. The rear yard is basically my back is to the rear yard in that picture. So it'd be the side yard, and you can see that, you know, it's certainly quite a ways away from the easement area. And actually, it should be, I mean, because it's not a, it's not a utility. So it shouldn't be in the utility easement area.
Further in regard to the easement, to what Josh was talking, what Councilman Mooney was talking about, the easement is really a platted easement granted to, it's not granted to NPPD. It's, it's, in the normal course, Dennis, correct me if I'm wrong, but those are maybe, may be occupied by NPPD, the gas company, could be occupied by cable, telephone, those things which are, in fact, public utilities that are, that are present there.
But it isn't necessarily, I mean, we said cable, so it isn't necessarily, cable's not a public utility as NPPD is. It's a private enterprise.
It is a private business. The distinguishing factor there is that in the grant of the cable franchise to Cable One, they're given the authority to occupy public utility rights by the city. So that's, that's how they're present.
Thanks for the clarification there. Okay. All right.
All right.
Thanks, Mr. Stauffer. You bet. I'm going to assume there's someone else that may want to come forward and speak to
I received, my name is Tom Schomer, by the way. I will, I've got a few, a couple handouts, and I'll be happy to get them. These came after I got the agenda packet, One or two more if there's not enough there.
Down that way.
So, good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. As many of you know, my name is Tom Schomer. I'm the owner of Telebeep Wireless here in Norfolk. My company has been involved in the wireless industry in Norfolk for over thirty years. In addition to providing high-speed wireless broadband services, we also are, do paging, cellular, and two-way radio. I'm here today basically to ask for your support, to support the Planning Commission's decision to approve my company's request for a conditional use permit to exceed the height restrictions allowable within the district. This permit is required in order to continue to use the utility pole to deliver wireless broadband services in the Western Heights neighborhood in northwest Norfolk. The site has resided peacefully in the backyard of the property for nearly twelve years, and it's critical to current broadband subscriptions and subscribers in the Western Heights neighborhood. If the site were to be reduced in height, which was one of the suggestions, it would render the site useless, and therefore we'd have to take the site down. Doing so would cause great hardship to a number of customers and residents who have come to rely on broadband for their education, for their entertainment, jobs, and such. I don't come here tonight with guns a-blazing or any fancy presentation, that's not who I am, but I'm just simply here to provide you with some simple facts and some details regarding the use of that utility pole. That's been installed for twelve years in the back of the property and then recently upgraded. I've provided each of you in that packet, you'll see there's a timeline overview of kind of how we got here. It's the same timeline overview with one correction, and that correction is to Mr. Stauffer's credit. At the Planning Commission meeting, I had mentioned, I had stated that we, we installed the apparatuses on an existing utility pole, when in reality, I went back, checked with our guys, and what happened is there was a number of utility poles in the area, NPPD planted another one within the area, and that's how it resided for twelve years. And that correction is made in that, in that book. I've also provided each of you with the spec sheets from NPPD regarding utility poles, which includes the pole currently used at the site. These standards were established in nineteen fifteen, revised again in nineteen twenty-four, and then again in nineteen forty-one. It's an estimate, it's estimated that nearly one hundred and eighty-five million utility poles are installed throughout North America with an estimated lifetime of forty to sixty years. Additionally, I've provided you out, provided you with a handout titled, get ready for this one, "Telebeep Response to Appeal Statement," Statements. This document is at the back of your handout, and you'll see it because it gets all red and yellow. This document addresses only a portion of the many statements made by Mr. Stauffer in his very detailed fifty-one-page appeal. Here's the difficult part, okay? I really feel that it's important that I speak to each of these points tonight, but out of respect, I also feel compelled to respect your time, so I'm not going to do that. But I will highlight, for time's sake, sake of time, I'll highlight four of the thirty-one responses that I put on those, on that deal. And I'll let you guys, if you have any questions after that, I'll be happy to answer questions. I'll start off by saying that I'd like to be, I'd like to say that I do appreciate and respect that Mr. Stauffer has concerns, and as citizen, as a citizen, he has every right to express those concerns through the process that we're going through tonight. Along with that right comes responsibility to rep, to respect the process with accurate information. The appeal itself contains several statements that are clearly deviating from the facts. Many of the statements are self-made determinations and unfounded conclusions. Number one, is it a utility pole or is it a tower? Clearly, Mr. Stauffer's appeal is centered on a repeated attempt to change the original language in our conditional use permit application from utility pole to tower. He mentioned the word, mentions the word "tower" forty-six times in his appeal, and more than likely nearly that tonight. You can refer to response number one. If you go back to response number one, which is the highlighted area, you'll see that Mr. Stauffer states that the issue involved is construction of a tower, not a utility pole. This is going to get just a little bit deep, but this is important to our company, it's important to the community, so I'm going to go deep right now. I'm just asking for your patience, please. A utility pole was, in fact, indicated in the conditional use permit application, not a tower. Secondly, according to City Code twenty-seven, section twenty-seven dash two defining "tower," a tower is defined as a structure. Here's, we go left and right a little bit. City Code section twenty-seven two, "Tower shall mean a structure situated on a site that is intended for transmitting or receiving television, radio, or telephone communications." That's, Mr. Stauffer agrees with that. According to City Code twenty-seven two defining "structure," because if you want to know what, if a tower is a structure, then what's a structure? Okay? When you define "structure," a utility pole is not considered a structure, according to City Code. "Structure shall mean anything constructed, erected, which requires permanent location on the ground, or which is attached to something or having permanent location on the ground, but not including driveways, sidewalks, or other surfacing, or public items such as utility poles, streetlights, and then there's a bunch of other stuff that doesn't matter tonight." So, here we go. Here's the little loop I'm taking you on. If a tower is defined as city, in City Code as a structure, and a utility pole, according to City Code, is not considered a structure, then tell me how can a utility pole be considered a tower? That's deep, some, I can just hear the things turning up there, but that's, that's the logic behind my, my statement. And I can stop on that one and ask, anybody to ask any questions regarding that before I go on to my second point, if we don't want to get it all muddied up. I'd be happy to do that.
Let me read this again. If a tower is defined by code as a structure, and a utility pole, according to code--
I'll get a bottle of water, please.
Then how can a utility pole be considered a tower? Counsel, are you all ready to let him continue on?
I'm ready to move on.
Okay.
I'm not so hung up on the tower versus utility pole, and I wasn't when we applied. When the city replied back to me, and, and when I saw it on the agenda, that it was for a communications tower, I immediately called codes and said, "I wish you wouldn't have called it a communications tower, because it's not." But I'm going to leave it at that because, to me, it's just semantics. We're going to move through because I want to cooperate with the process. Little did I know that tower was going to be what this thing was going to become, even though I applied for a conditional use permit for a utility pole. Okay? Question or item number two, is Telebeep a utility? In the appeal, Mr. Stauffer boldly states that Telebeep is not a utility and makes multiple references to that point. Here you can refer to response number two, which is right below number one. "Telebeep is not a utility, according to Mr. Stauffer's statement. On a local level, by definition in City Code, Telebeep would be considered a utility in that we are subject to regulatory, to regulation by an agency of the federal government. Telebeep is heavily regulated by the FCC as well as the FAA. City Code section twenty-seven two, 'Public utility shall mean any business which furnishes, furnishes the general public telephone service, telegraph, tele, yeah, I can't read tonight, electricity, natural gas, water, and sewer, or any business so affecting the public interest as to be subject to the supervision or regulation by an agency of the state or federal government.' On a federal level, Telebeep is considered a utility following recent action by the FCC regarding open internet, which reclassifies broadband internet access as telecommunications services under Title II of the Communications Act. This reclassification now makes broadband internet services a utility, which also ensures fair access to utility poles under section two twenty-four. Now, I don't expect any of you to just know that already, but I do know that. Again, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer regarding whether we are a utility or not. Which is, which is, when I talk to, and I don't want to mention names, I talked to City Code, when I talked to City Codes last August, or I should say, whenever, it was late summer of fourteen, that's the, that's the section that the person referred to. And I was driving down the road, I was going to my daughter's track meet, and I was trying to figure out what he was talking about, because I, asking him if I was a utility, and I said, "Well," and then this spring, I, we did it again after the fact, when, when this situation rose up, and I go, "You know, we're a utility by, by definition, but, but there's potential appeal happening on a federal level, because there was all this objections to whether or not they were going to reclassify broadband as a utility opening us up to the open internet rules under Title II, section two twenty-four." So, that being said, we are a utility by definition of the City Code. So hopefully we can put that discussion to And then, any questions on utility? Number three, did Telebeep know of regulations and requirements in two thousand and four? Mr. Stauffer implies that in two thousand and four, that I personally knew the regulations and requirements that applied to the utility pole installation because I obtained-- applied to the utility pole installation, because I obtained a conditional use permit on May 18th, 2004. Part of that is correct. We did obtain a conditional use permit on May 18th, 2004, but the rest of it is, is a little bit different. So if you look on this one, you can refer to number, response number 26. This is when I start hearing papers flipping. And I'll just read a little bit of this, because it, it talks about all other conditional use permits issued by the planning commission since 2004, and, you know, it goes on, it goes on to talk about, require six to eight-foot fences, unless I'm going to the wrong one. I'm sorry, let's go to response number 12. I'm so sorry. Response number 12, you have to go back. I knew that made no sense when I got there. Where the, the statement says, "He knew the regulations and requirements that applied to 2208 Elmer's Lane, since he also requested and obtained a CUP during another time, during the same time, C attachment, attachment five, which was a conditional use permit issued to me." And by the way, Sue, I'm sorry, Mayor, I noticed your name was on the bottom of that one, when you were president or chair of the planning commission, that goes back a ways. So then, response number two, attachment number five is, that Mr. Stoffler talks about, is a conditional use permit granted to Tom Schomer in May of 2004 for the construction of an actual communications tower, as indicated on the conditional use permit. It was not for the installation of a utility pole, and there's a significant difference between them. The communications tower was constructed with the use of a crane and its 110-foot-tall superstructure requiring 52 cubic yards of concrete at the base, proper engineering, as well as FAA and local airport authorization. And I recall working with Mr. Smith during that timeframe. I did not know at the time, and I do not still believe, that the regulatory requirements that apply, that applied to the conditional use permit granted by the, for the communications tower applied, applied to the drilling of a hole and the installation of a utility pole. Best efforts to understand City Code, as well as discussions with elected officials, city officials, staff, all played a part in coming to that conclusion back in 2004. So, to imply that there was no discussions in 2004 is also inaccurate. And if you look at response 15, indicates there were no discussions with city personnel prior to the installation at Elmer's Lane in 2004. My response is, I have not indicated that there were no discussions with city personnel prior to the installation in 2004, because I did have discussions with staff, elected officials, as well as airport authority. The discussions were had during the same time I was working through the conditional use permit, referred to Mr. Stoffler's attachment five, for the communications tower on Eisenhower. So, that, I guess I'll stop there again and ask if there's any questions regarding whether I had prior knowledge. I'm not sure where that's all going, but I'm happy to answer any questions regarding that portion.
So, Mr. Schomer, clarification just on, the one that you had the conditional use permit for was a three-legged or four-legged?
It's a self-supporting tower that has a 20-foot square-wide base that goes 110 feet in the air, and has, has a conventional cellular carrier-grade communications tower. And that's the one that's out on Eisenhower, like 30th and Eisenhower. That thing was, that thing was an engineering deal, and, you know, to the city's credit, they required the, the engineering on it. I didn't like it at the time, but nonetheless, it was appropriate, and we did it.
Tom, tell us again why that one was a communications tower, and this one's a utility pole?
Well, communications tower is a structure, a utility pole is not a structure. That's as simple as that.
Keep going, because a structure is-
A, a utility pole is not classified by the city as a structure. Because it's exempt from the city's code for defining what a structure is, because the, the city code understands that you will have to put utilities in that may need attachments to utility poles, and if you put restrictions on that, you, I mean, you still have to go through conditional use at times, I'm sure, for various things, but that's the whole premise behind it. And that's back, that's just whether we had knowledge or not. If you have any questions, I've got one left, and then I'll be available to carry on, or whatever. Is the utility pole a safety hazard? Mr. Stoffler refers to 11 attachments involving 25 pages of previous conditional use permits dating back to 2004, to suggest the need for a six-to-eight-foot fence to be installed at the base of the utility pole. Now, we can go to number 26. The response to that is, it is very important and responsible to install a six-to-eight-foot fence around a real communications tower site that has cable, ladders, climbable base, buildings, air conditioning units, backup generators, and other mechanical components, but it would be a bit extreme, however, to require a six-to-eight-foot fence to be built around every utility pole in the city of Norfolk. Safety concerns have been adequately met within the conditions of the conditional use permit that's been approved by the planning commission. Those, some of those would be having the climbable pegs at 15 feet, and that was some, that was a discussion had with city staff, and if it needed to go to 20, whatever, but, I mean, it's 15 is, you can find somebody 15 feet, he needs to be a receiver at Nebraska. And then, Mr. Stoffler states that the utility pole is a safety hazard and could fall over. And this is where you can refer to response number 30. And the second portion of that primarily, the spec sheets provided by NPPD clearly indicates that pole, that the pole is not a safety hazard. According to public power district personnel themselves, the other utility poles in the back of that yard, carrying electrical transmission lines, pose a much greater danger than the freestanding pole without any electrical transmissions line suspended from it. They also state that because the pole's in the, in fact, a taller pole, the design is much stronger than the others that are currently in the backyard. And I'd be, thank you for your time, I'm willing to answer any questions. I know I threw a lot at you, and it took a lot of twists, but I'm, I'm willing to answer any questions tonight.
You'd stated you had contact airport authority, as far as what was there?
Well, back in 2004, there, during, those same discussions, we're going on, we're talking about the Eisenhower Tower, because it was a tower. And as a matter of fact, I've, I didn't bring it with me, but back when we applied for that conditional use permit in '04 for the Eisenhower three-legged tower, actually, it might have four legs, it's a big tower. The airport authority had no problem with it whatsoever, his only recommendation was if it exceeds, even though legally, we don't need, we don't need to light towers until they meet 200 feet, the airport, I always check with airports, because sometimes it's better if you light them a little bit lower than that, he just recommended if it gets over 150 feet, to maybe throw a light on it. Well, the tower doesn't grow, so it stayed at 110 feet for the last, whatever it is, 11, 12 years, or whatever.
So, Tom, the difference between the two structures, I just heard you say, because I was, I was understanding that the one on Eisenhower was, and I probably misunderstood it, that it was a, a single piece of either steel or whatever that went down into this foundation, but it's actually a multi-legged-
Right.
-situation, so it, it more closely defines the definition of a-
In our industry, across the, the United States, or international, I just got back from an international conference, the use of utility poles is, is what's happening, I'm just telling you right now. People are taking, they're going from 400-foot pole, poles, towers, I'm confused what's a pole and a tower after tonight, but they take 400-foot towers and they're dropping them down, they're getting them sometimes down into that 100 to 80 to 70 feet level, because they want to reduce interference, and they want to do more micro pops, because neighborhoods now are demanding broadband at speeds that we wouldn't have dreamt of needing years ago. So to deliver that, you need cooperating regulatory policy, and honestly, as much as we don't like the federal government and some of the things they do, the open internet bill, that path, or that, that language that changed actually is not overly restrictive, and it's going to, it's going to encourage the development of broadband in neighborhoods, by giving attachment rights to poles, and creating broadband as a utility, and those sort of things.
So are you telling me, Tom, that we're going to be probably seeing more poles in residential areas?
That all depends about tonight.
Well-
Because in, I'm telling you, as, as an industry, the push is there. We either, we either have the ability to locate, we, meaning an industry, we either have the ability to locate, you know, we don't want to go apply for tower permits, or tower, spend the money it takes to, to put foundations and all that, and you can go drill a hole, put a utility pole up in a neighborhood, that's what we're going to do. It's cost-effective, it gets, it drives the price down to the end user, and that's what you all want as, as, you know, end users, basically. So yes, the quick, the answer is yes, there's, there's a number of companies out there that this is the, this is the, the model you might say that they're using.
But aren't I going to be the one that's going to want to see this all to be underground? Like, electric, aren't I one of those that are going to say, "Why are we, why are we lifting it in the air, why are we not going underground?"
Because RF propagates through the air, meaning, I know that's big language, maybe-
It's very big, so-
Radio frequencies, wireless communications transmit via, they propagate through the air. Granted, you can have fiber, you can have-
Right.
You can have DSL lines, you can have all these other things, there's a million, there's a multitude of ways you can do it, but I think no one can argue that wireless is a growing solution to meet consumer needs, and we're in that business, and for us to be able to provide that to end users and meet those needs, we have to be able to do things wirelessly. So you need height to do that, thank goodness, we don't need as much height as we need, as we used to need, basically, because the demand is so high.
Tom, you, you no doubt keep your eye on the next thing that's coming down the road, and the thing that's coming down the road after that, this is a very fast-changing technology. What, what is the next generation of transmission, as you see it, in five or 10 years down the road?
Yeah, I'd, I'd be a pretty wealthy guy in 10 years if I knew that tonight, but we, we take, we gamble, and we take risks that are two to three months out, I mean, that's, technology changes that fast. But there's no doubt that everything is, is coming down into the, into the lower area, you know, they're not, they're not going taller with towers, they're definitely going lower, and they're spotting them in neighbor, you drive in any community, and you see actual towers in places, you're wondering, "Why is that tower there? How did it get there?" And all those kinds of things, but demand drives it. I was at a football game in North Platte two weeks ago, I'm sitting down watching the football game, I look up above me, the pole that, the light pole has got about 16 antennas, cellular antennas on it. People find ways to be, you know, welcoming to that kind of stuff.
Tom, why was this pole replaced, if it's only five or 10 feet taller than the other one?
That's a great question. The reason it was replaced is because back in '04, we installed the pole, the, the mastpipe went to the top, we put a single omnidirectional antenna, which simply means it, it goes in an omni-direction, and we could serve a decent amount of customers with that, because the demands for bandwidth was very low, pretty much check email, no streaming, that kind of stuff. As demands increased, we had to find ways to improve that delivery, so we had to put sectored antennas up, which means I can now look multiple directions with new equipment that provides higher throughput to each of those directions, but to do that, it required more of a flat panel, sort of an antenna, as you can see on one of the pictures, and that mastpipe that was up at 65 feet could not, we didn't, well, we, we, we knew it was not going to hold that. So we, that's when I made the call to the city and asked the question about if we replaced that pole with another pole, and the overall height only changes eight to 10, or 15, whatever, we didn't know for sure what it would be, is that going to be problematic? And that's when, when I was told, and I'm, I'm not getting anybody's case, because everybody was cooperative, said that, you know, if the airport doesn't have any problem with it, no FFA, no FFA, FFA didn't care, but the FAA didn't care either, wouldn't care, because it's way below any of the requirements that would be given to them, to us. So we decided we would go ahead and invest in two poles, and by the way, I know you're, I know you're aware of it, there's another one we'll be talking about in the near future, there's one up on, on West Benjamin, we bought two poles at the time, and they both were purchased and, and prepared to be installed based on our knowledge of City Code. It wasn't, we just did it in the middle of the night and said, "Hope we get, don't get caught." So that, that pole was installed back in August of last year, then you fast-forward to this spring, and we do this one, and then we've got issues, and that's okay, we're here, and we'll fix them. So that's why the pole went to the height that it is right now, and the only reason, the only reason it went up eight feet, basically, is because of the, the calculation in which NPPD buries poles. You buy a certain pole, you put it in, so, like, it's 10% plus two feet, it just happens to be that it was going to be 70 feet above ground, or the other one was 65 to the top of the, to the top of the structures, or the attachment.
So was it legal when it was 65?
I'm, I'm only going by what was, what happened in 2004, happened for 12 years, and then, and when we started in 2015, and we started talking about this, and this got changed, I've had a number of discussions with city staff, whether this was right, wrong, or indifferent, I'm telling you right now, I don't know.
Well, I always thought we had a limit, but-
You do have a limit on height.
Yes.
We have a height restriction in-
You have a height restriction of-
Residential zone property is 35 feet.
On utility poles, what, what is that?
35 feet. On, not, that's the height restriction of R1, and we have different height restrictions for different zoning categories. This particular area is 35 feet. Our staff would tell you, over the years, we got asked, we get asked this question, or have been asked this question periodically over the course of many, many years, and the chief, fire chief's here, and he's took a lot of those calls back in the day. And that's the general, that's the general answer, because there's, you know, ham operators were all the rage back in the 90s, I remember, you know, emergency management areas, we've had some poles out there that 35 feet, but our general answer to that was 35 feet in those R1 zoning districts, and that's the restriction.
So it was 35 feet overall?
Correct.
From ground to transmission?
Right, and, you know, when we get asked those questions, that's how we responded. How tall is it? Is the pole 35 feet or less? And then, if it is, godspeed, go ahead. That's how we've answered over the years. And when you look at the code, and as Mr. Schomer pointed out, you know, especially if we're going to, if there's a general push to, which I believe there is, to have these kind of services in communities, you, you wonder about the technology, and you wonder about other possibilities of communication. Tom, you know, as you see out there in, in, in industry, as far as placement of these things, I know of a case in Scotts Bluff, or a case study perhaps in Scotts Bluff, where they're starting to mount them on streetlights, and you wonder, as you said, you know, if you bring it lower, is there going to be more opportunity to, to employ those technologies in a different way to-
To answer that question, Shane, or everyone for that matter, you can, if you have licensed spectrum, such as cellular and other, other forms of, of delivery, or some of the bands that are out there that are unused right now, that's possible. But that requires high-powered units, millions of dollars of investment, and then the price to the end user goes sky. But in our industry, the, the biggest push right now in our industry is in unlicensed spectrum, and we're fighting like hell to get more unlicensed spectrum, and that's line of sight, most of it isn't line of sight. This isn't unique to Norfolk, Nebraska, it's all across America. It's such a big deal that- It's such a big deal that the FCC has put that language in their, in their most recent findings.
I suspect, Mayor Council, if, if we have a push for this type of communication and there's more, more towers like this one, I think we, well, I know, we really have to work on our code to understand what our code is completely saying to regulate these, because I can't imagine that propagation of, of poles of this magnitude would be welcoming in all neighborhoods across the city of Norfolk. I mean, I think it would be a tough sell to, to a lot of neighborhoods. So I think we need to clarify some code language in order to, to understand exactly the arguments that Mr. Schomer and Mr. Stoffler are making tonight, so we can have that clarity going forward. But I can tell you the past clarity was thirty-five feet. If it's thirty-five feet or less, that's where we hung our hat from zoning context, and then you, if you look across our community, there's, there's, I don't know how many poles like this, but there's poles in their thirty-five feet or less typically, or right around that area, because that's our general rule, especially in residential neighborhoods. Again, it varies according to the zoning district.
You'll find a number of poles, I don't know how many hundreds of them there are in town, that are eighty-foot poles that are up and down Twenty-Fifth Street, you know, Benjamin Avenue, various parts of towns that are right in the proximity of homes.
I guess I'm trying to understand if our restriction is thirty-five foot. Why was that discussion not had in oh four? Or was it?
That was part of.
Do you recall that being part of the discussion?
The discussion in.
With the city officials at that.
Yeah, the discussion in oh four was basically if there's no problem with the airport, then there's no problem.
Which tower are we talking about, Tom, though? Was that the one on Eisenhower?
The Eisenhower one was a no-brainer because it was going to be.
Okay.
A, a regular tower, but if you're going to utilize a, a, what's commonly known as a utility pole, that's what I call them anyhow, utility pole, then, then you can attach to the utility poles, no different than if you've got a house in the neighborhood right now that's at thirty-five feet and you decide you're going to put a fifteen-foot or a twenty-foot antenna on it to get some of the free TV and stuff that you can get, is that, I mean, there's, there's discussions that have to be had regarding code. You know, and I think, I think that those discussions need to take place.
Sure, go ahead, Clint.
Couple, couple of things there, we're into, we're into all sorts of things that are, are kind of, well.
Pull your microphone.
Some might say they're interesting, some might say that they're challenging, but one of the things, I, I didn't read any of the stuff that, that Tom handed out here. I didn't get a copy of that, but as I, I was listening to Tom and going through the, through the various things, the couple of things that I just want to say, I think you will see electric posts that are taller than thirty-five feet. What we need to recognize is that in Nebraska, utilities that have eminent domain powers, NPPD, the gas company, whatever, zoning doesn't apply to them, okay? So you can have all the, zoning doesn't apply against the city, doesn't, zoning doesn't apply against the county. If you've got eminent domain powers, zoning doesn't apply. So, you know, the question about the utility poles, the electric poles that service the community that are out there that we see, that, that are, are taller than, than thirty-five feet, really the issue is what are those out there that belong to somebody that doesn't have eminent domain? And then it becomes a question of where are they in the zoning context of the height restrictions, which Shane references as being C1. So I really think, and I'll, I'll look to Scott or, or any of the other staff, because I really haven't, as I said, certainly, however many pages that is, I, there wouldn't have been a chance to read all of that, Mr. Schomer, but what I'm, what I'm saying is that I think there are, are two basic exceptions provided for in the code, and I don't disagree that the code may need some, some work, and, and from the time that the code was put in place, maybe some of these things that Mr. Schomer's talking about are new developments. But the two exceptions are if you have eminent domain powers, zoning doesn't apply, and then in the code, twenty-seven dash two-eighty-four makes exceptions for communication towers. So it says, as part of the conditional use process, the planning commission may, after public notice and hearing, permit the tower to exceed the height restrictions otherwise allowed in the district. So if you want to put a communications tower in an R1 district, it's the only way you can have something taller than the thirty-five feet, whether it's an antenna on top of the house, or whether it's a, a, a post, or, or whatever it is, it has to be a communications tower under twenty-seven two-eighty-four, and then the conditional use process can allow you to be, to be taller.
And that's sort of the, that's sort of the pathway we took, quite honestly, when we first started talking about this conditional use permit process. I didn't, I, I'm going to call it a utility pole till I go to my grave, but if, if the city or somebody else wants to call it a communications tower because that's what you feel it is, and that provides access to, to height restrictions being waived, let's do it. I, I just want to run my business, continue to do what I've been doing for thirty years in this community, and I'm asking for your cooperation tonight. Are there any other questions?
Minor one, the reference has been that it is or is not inside the easement. Can you clarify that?
I, quite honestly, it was contracted out to a public power district, and I don't think it's in an easement. I think if it's in an easement, I know we've had situations in other communities where we've wanted one of these pole, utility poles put in really in a certain specific place, and they wouldn't put it there because it was too close to the utility lines. So it's no different in some ways than out in some of our farms we've got out in Hull County, when you need to cross private property with, with utilities, you just get agreements with the folks to do it, and that's what we did here.
The pole itself sits on personal property and not utilities?
Yes, to my understanding, I, I'm positive, I guess, on that.
Tom, before you go, and this might be a question directed more to Clint or Valerie, but are, in other communities, you, you referenced that on the federal level, wireless providers are being considered, at least in part, as utilities.
Well, wireless broadband service is in fact a utility.
Okay, utility. So in terms of zoning, Clint, Valerie, do you know what other communities have done with that? Are they considering wireless providers to be utilities within context of their local codes?
I, I don't know, I'm not, however, I'm not aware of anything, and I, I could stand to be corrected, I'm not aware of anything that, other than what I, what I said earlier about if you have eminent domain powers, then zoning doesn't apply. So how, I, I have no idea. Mr. Schomer probably knows how other people would treat these in their, in their zoning jurisdiction better than I would, because he's been active in those areas.
I know there are cooperative and less cooperative communities in Nebraska. I feel we're a cooperative community, I'm not implying that we're not. I'm just asking you to, to don't move the cheese on me, please. I mean, I did have discussions in oh four regarding this and felt it was okay to do. It resided there for twelve years. I had additional discussions in two thousand and fourteen, purchased the equipment, made the upgrades, upgraded the end user's equipment, and was made aware of a complaint. I've done everything you've asked me to do regarding following up on this complaint. I've apologized for the acts of others, not even myself, for the trespassing on Mr. Stoffler's property. I've done, I think, everything in good faith that I can possibly do outside of, I don't know where we're going in the future, but I don't think it's appropriate to move the cheese on this one. I think we need to, I'm asking for your support on this one. If you want my involvement in the future to, to discuss where code needs to go and, and how it might better fit the needs of the demands of our community, I'm all for that.
Well.
A typical pole, like utility pole like this, or whatever tower, whatever we're going to call it today, but how many, you know, obviously it's broadband service, like, would you state would be, how much service we provided off something like that for the?
Off in that one pole?
Yeah.
You mean off in terms of numbers of customers or capacity and gigabits?
Yeah, I know, you said it's line of sight, so is that in line of sight if, you know, is it, is the broadband?
If you don't see the antenna, you have about a ninety-five percent or ninety-eight percent chance you will not get service. So it's not something that you can drop down to thirty-five feet and, and function properly. That's why we had the, the mast pipe on the other utility pole for twelve years. And when we had to upgrade because of demands of streaming and multiple devices in homes, we just simply spent the money, we were, we thought about doing a tower, a real tower back in oh four. Those discussions were had at the same time, we decided to go with the utility pole and a mast pipe, because we were already working on the other tower out in Eisenhower. And then in fourteen, when we made the decision to purchase the two poles, we did that based on the fact that once again, as long as the airport didn't have any problem with it, we were given reasonable assurance, at least, I thought, that that was okay. Now, I can only tell you, where we go from here moving forward, I don't know what direction is best, but I think we need to work in a cooperative manner, and I think I've done that.
And Tom, I don't know that anybody would argue that with you at all, but I will tell you, certainly, I don't want to see your pole in my neighborhood that tall, that big, personally. That's my personal feeling. But again, you know, I appreciate the fact that if that's the direction things are going, we need to have a long, hard conversation, I think, within this city and looking at what it is that we're going to allow and what we're not going to allow. But again, we're, that's not what we're here to talk about tonight. We're here to talk about, and I, and my, honestly, my real concern is, Tom, I've never, I don't remember that there was ever any conversation of anything being over the thirty-five feet, and that concerns me. In no way am I telling you that.
Well, we didn't, in, in two thousand and four, we didn't speak to the planning commission.
At that location?
Right.
Right.
Yeah, the planning commission, we can feel if you're using a, if you're using an existing structure.
What, what, help me again there, what was already there?
Structure, what's that?
What was already there? Remind me.
Sorry, I didn't understand what you said.
Remind me what was already there, because that's what you're saying, right? In two thousand and four, there was an existing struc-
I, I digressed. It was not an existing structure. There was nothing there, so. There was a bunch of utility poles in the area, so rather than put a tower up, we were going to discuss with the person in the back field, the empty field, possibilities of putting up a tower. But that was going to be more costly, and we thought it might be obviously a little more obtrusive with, with an aluminum tower or something like that, so we decided just to throw another utility pole in amongst the other ones. There's two other ones that are carrying electrical lines right in that area.
Okay.
And that's not uncommon, and you can look at, to your point about not wanting to see towers or poles or whatever, you know, none of us probably really do, but if you look out a lot of people's windows, that's what you see, whether it be utility or whether it be, oh, I guess now that we're a utility, I guess I'll stop.
Okay, but again, I just want to make sure I, I am correct in then saying that the decision you made in two thousand and four to put it in that location was not brought before the planning commission?
Correct.
Okay.
That was just, that was secondary conversation that was being had at the same time, because the, the conditional use permit for the one out on Eisenhower.
Right.
Took place in like April, May-ish, or something like that. And during all those discussions, we were talking about other expansions that we were going to be doing in the area, and that was one of them.
Okay, and so then that one went in exceeding the thirty-five feet?
I think the real, the rub here, so to speak, is the attachment of the mast pipe. Because the, the, the utility pole itself was thirty-five or whatever it was.
Okay.
And then we attached a mast pipe to it, and we did that because we needed to get to the height that we needed to be functional in that, at that time.
So the pole installation would, you know, I'm sure what was probably told, Tom, Mr. Schomer, was the pole installation was fine, but we never, staff, to our recollection, after meeting again this afternoon about this topic, never went out and inspected whether there was any additional attachments to it, you know, we just, thirty-five foot was a general rule, we told lots of different folks over the course of the years, thirty-five feet, depending on the zoning jurisdiction, and we went forth, and they, they went.
Well, the conversations in oh four, I know, included discussions about having an attachment. We may not have, we may not have known honestly at the time whether it was going to be a fifteen-foot mast pipe or twenty-five or ten, we didn't know. But it's typical for installations, is, you're not, you typically, unless you go big school like you did, where you do where you put sectors up, so.
Any other questions for Tom at all? Clarify one thing for me, Shane, Dennis, somebody. So when that thirty-five foot pole went into the backyard on Elmer's Lane or wherever, would a, a conditional permit then necessary? Even at thirty-five foot?
No, not at thirty-five foot.
Okay, you can do whatever you want.
That, that was our city code, anything under thirty-five foot, we let go forth. Anything above that height restriction.
Okay, then you're coming.
Required some sort of process, either a zoning change, or in this case for a communication tower, as Clint described, it would have caused the conditional use permit action to be held. That's the, that's the way you get in, you, the communication tower definition is important to that conversation, because that's the way you open up the conditional use permit. Now again, you know, as Tom described, or Mr. Schomer described, that, and we all understand, you know, the technology is generating so fast.
Right.
That's two thousand and four, that's over ten years ago, and it, it goes leaps and bounds, obviously, quickly. So as you move forward, again, we have to understand what that means to our community and what we want our skylines to look like, and what we, what we, our abilities to use that kind of communication i- is important to our citizens, so it's, it's all jumbled up there, and we have to have some serious discussions about what that means going forward.
Any further questions at all, counsel, for Mr. Schomer? Okay, you're free to be, Tom. Certainly, this is still a public hearing, open, so if there's anyone that wants to come forward and address. Please come forward.
There's a couple of things that Mr. Schomer talked about that, I, I, I know you were listening, because some of the questions that came out asked those same similar things. Mr. Schomer said he was going to call this a utility pole to his grave, but several times when he talked about two poles that were purchased, never mentioned utility at that particular point in time. And I would suggest that it's not the structure, not the item itself, they're all poles, that's what they are, they're poles, it's the end use that qualifies as a utility pole, or electrical pole, or communication tower, whatever it is. It'd be similar to if I go buy a van, and if I go buy a van and I use that van for just my own personal purposes, I'm not subject to any regulation or anything. But if I start hauling other people, if I start, you know, holding myself out as, I'd say, a passenger van, and I'm just going to start hauling people around, now it's a taxi, or now it's a limousine, or it's something else that requires regulation. And can I come up to the people and say, look, it's still a van, it's just a van, that's all it is, it's just a van? And so I'm not subject to the regulation. And that's what we're talking about here, it's a pole. It's the adding on of those particular things at the top of the pole that turned this into a communication tower. And so that's what we're talking about here, it's a communication tower, just like we'd be talking about that van being a limousine or a taxi or whatever, and not just a van anymore, it's been put to a different purpose, a purpose that then requires regulation. Plus the other thing, if you go along with Mr. Schomer's argument that these are utility poles, then all of a sudden, if we look at what Mr. Shukai was talking about and Mr. Moaning, which you were talking about, all of a sudden, there's no regulation. Because all of a sudden, it's where if this is a utility, and it's a utility pole, then he can put in, and anybody who is in, who is putting in these types of poles can, and using them for some similar type of thing, can put them anywhere, and they don't even have to come to get a conditional use permit. Because now they're no longer, it's a utility. And according to what Mr. Schomer's talking about, that you, and in his definitions, he talked that the structure does not include a utility pole, so if this is a utility pole, these things don't even apply, there is no zoning regulations that apply. I'm also a little surprised that he didn't agree with the idea that this is a communications tower. Because if you look at the conditional use, uses that are allowed in the city, especially in residential areas, there's nothing in there at all that says you can put, you can exceed the height regulations for a utility pole. But there is for communications towers. Communications tower, according to the matrix, I believe, that there is, you can, you can have a communications tower in any zoning district. There's no similar thing for utility poles, structures, whatever, but there is for communications towers. You can have them in any zoning regulation or any zoning district, as long as you get a conditional use permit. But if basically, he's saying this is not a communications tower, then what is the basis for even asking for a conditional use permit? What is the thing under the code, and I haven't looked at the code completely about that, but what is there under the code? at the code completely about that, but what is there under the code, under the residential districts, that says that this is something that is allowed as a conditional use permit? Communications towers, it would be allowed if they get a condition, conditional use permit, under the residential district zoning things, 35 feet height requirement. I'm not aware of anything that this would fit under as allowing as a conditional use. Another thing, too, is that if this is something, and I think this has already been addressed by you already, but if this is something that is coming more and more, that doesn't mean we should not regulate it. That means we should regulate it, because otherwise, these things are going to be everywhere. And also, if you're talking about, you know, does this mean that anybody can go out and put, put these up without there being any type of oversight by the, by the, by the city, by anybody, about how these are being One last thing, you just talked about, it'd be a great hardship to people. There's other options. There's cable, internet, there's other options for internet. These people would have to switch to something else. Doesn't mean that there won't be the ability to get internet out there, it just means they would switch to a different provider.
Any other questions for Ross?
Thanks again.
Jim?
The, the assessment in, in Mr. Schumer's response, number two, notes that, on a federal level, Tel Aviv would be considered a utility, following the recent action by the FCC. Do you concur with that, or do you object to that, or?
Well, I guess, I guess it's, it's, of course, several-
I guess, and granted, it's not necessarily utility with eminent domain powers, but as far as the definition of a utility, would you concur with that or not?
Well, I'm not an expert in the area, so I'm not exactly sure. But the question that I do have, then, is that if the next step to that is that, yes, it is a utility, so yes, this becomes a utility pole, and so then there is no regulation of these things, as Mr. Schumer points out, with structures not defined as a, as a utility pole and things like that, all of a sudden, the city has no control over any of these things, and they can be put up anywhere.
Well, and I, I don't know that that would be a, for, for fact situation, because as Mr. Shukai noted, is that, you know, the, the utility poles that occur, otherwise are poles that are established by groups that have eminent domain, because I will tell you, um, my backyard has a pole in it, and it's not a, it's not a power pole, and it's not a telephone pole, but I damn well know when, when a tornado's coming.
It works well, huh?
It works very well.
Oh, good.
Well, I guess my response to that would be, is that-
But you're sitting there.
Normally, I would look at a utility as being something that there is a limited number of suppliers, possibly even just one. For, for example, electricity, we don't have a bunch of people go to get electricity, we don't have a bunch of people can go to get water, we don't have a bunch of people you can go to to get natural gas. And that's, I think, why they are given special status as a utility, and maybe given some things that we don't, won't, don't apply to them, because they are given that special status of they, they are providing something that no one else can get from anybody but them. But wide, broadband internet, there's many different places you can get that. There's other competing companies that do wireless internet. In Norfolk, there, there's, you can get it by, you could, you could do it by fiber optic at some point, you know, depending off that, if that gets going in, in town and stuff. So there's a lot of different things. And that, that's another thing, too, that I guess I would point out, too, is that by, by allowing this to happen, we, we bypassed all of those discussions. And there's a portion of the code, and Mr. Shukai referred to it earlier, and I, that talks about all the different additional things that apply to communications towers. And one of those is, is that it should be a discussion about what height is really necessary, are there other options, those types of things to provide the service, other than, you know, a huge pole. And we never got to have, got to have a chance to have those discussions, because the pole went up, and it's there. And we didn't have a chance to talk about these things, like, things on light poles, uh, you know, you know, possibly maybe multiple small towers on roofs, like I think that Mr. Schumer indicated in some of his discussions and some of his documents earlier, they had talked about that at one point in time. We don't know why that didn't get used. Was it just a matter because it was too expensive? Is that something that the rest of us who want to have no more than 35-foot high things in our area, we have to give up, because it's too expensive for a business where somebody's going to make money off of it, that they want to be able to make more money, so they put up a single tower instead of many smaller towers, and we have to then bear the burden of having this thing that's over 35 feet in our backyard, or within 14 feet, or however far is it? I mean, those are the discussions we didn't get to have, because the tower is there, and those things should have been done at the time. We should have been able to have those discussions, but we weren't able to because of, the tower went up. Without there being any permits, without there being any discussion on a public hearing, anything of that nature, it just went up. And then another thing, I think, too, is that regardless of 2004, I mean, first of all, I don't think that you can basically say, "Well, it's been there for 11 years or whatever, so the city can't do anything." I don't think there's anything that, in the law at all, that ever says anything like that. Uh, plus, the other thing is, too, is that it's not the same as it was in 2004, it's a whole new animal. And as I indicated, Mr. Koba could see it from where he was going to his house, over on College, in College View area, on Sheridan Boulevard, and he couldn't see the other one. So obviously, there's a big change. And so shouldn't we have those discussions? Shouldn't we have those types of things come up, and we talk about those, and look at those things, and see is there something else that can be done before a great, big change takes place, rather than afterwards? That, I think, is what was, the code was designed to do. And that's what the conditional use process was all set up to be, is we have those discussions first, rather than have those discussions after things are in place. I don't know, I probably got way off the topic, but-
Kind of an unusual situation. You're absolutely right. It's, it's unusual that we are considering a conditional use permit after the fact. And I, I understand that completely. I really do. Any other questions for Mr. Stauffer?
Thanks again.
You bet. Anyone else that wants to come forward and speak to, we'll ask you to sign in for us, if you will, state your name.
Hello.
Are you limping?
Huh?
Are you limping?
No.
Oh, okay.
That's just, I don't know, maybe it's the way I walk.
All right. Sorry, I thought you were having a hard time coming up here.
I do have a little tendonitis in a foot, maybe that-
Okay.
Uh, my name is Brian Hewitt, and I'm a resident here in Norfolk. And I have to be honest, I didn't know a whole lot about this until a few days ago. Um, I'm a subscriber with Tel Aviv, I have been for a number of years. Uh, I know I'm getting a feed, I don't know where it's coming from. I know the direction, because I know the direction my satellite points. Um, so today, I decided to go try to find the pole in question, and I actually didn't find it. Had to look around a little bit, get the address, and when I got there, I could find it. And I was asking Tom, I said, "How tall is that?" He said, "70 feet." And I said, "We got some tall trees around here," because, I mean, I know we got trees on the golf course a lot taller than that, but, um, trees just continue to grow.
Sure.
And obviously, maybe certain height works, but anyway, I, like I said, I've been a Tel Aviv customer for a number of years, and I've been a satellite TV subscriber for more than 20 years. And I no longer have a landline phone, uh, mostly because I got tired of the telemarket calls. Not the only thing I ever got in the evenings. Uh, I chose Tel Aviv because it was a, an efficient and economical choice for myself. Um, my wife and I depend on our internet for work, as well as entertainment. Um, in my line of work, the internet is one of the most valuable resources that I have. Uh, I use it for marketing, social media, weather updates. I mean, I literally kind of have to watch the weather every two hours to know what's going to happen. Um, I use it, as far as email, getting in touch of customers, education. Um, I recently was out in California, and I figured, I found out just how tied-in we are to technology, because I was out in the Monterey Bay area for a golf tournament, and, uh, the entire Monterey Bay lost power for 19 hours. Now, we lose power around here, it glitches on, as it pops off, it comes back on, I got to reset my computer, I got to do this or that. But 19 hours put a crimp in my style, for the most part. Uh, couldn't charge my phone, went through a lot of data on my internet, you know, trying to entertain myself, because our hotel was without power. We had no power, it was dark. So, uh, without internet, uh, I don't think there's any question, uh, at least the service that I'm provided, uh, that my, uh, the impact would definitely be negative to my impact, my lifestyle that I have. An interruption in service would cost me more money. Like I said, for what I, I don't have cable TV, uh, I don't have a landline phone, uh, so finding a new provider would, would definitely be an inconvenience for me, so.
Okay. Thanks, Brian.
Um, I just kind of want to, I mean, Brian, I think, said it very well.
Say your name.
Oh, my name is Mark Widener. Thank you. Sorry. Um, just, um, you know, some things are necessary. Um, I know we need, um, since that tower, especially the, the new one came up, our service has been a heck of a lot better, and I need it for my business. Uh, my kids need it for their school, um, their schooling and stuff like that. And, um, I, we are wireless, too. I know there's other sources, but how economical is it? You know, you start, you start taking away, um, sources, um, you start reducing competition and, and then pricing can go whatever way it wants to. But I just want to do, um, I, I, I know it's, it's not ideal, but there's a lot of things that aren't ideal, but are necessary in order us, for us to progress and, and do things on a more efficient, um, money-wise and time-wise and, and all that. So I just wanted to-
So let me ask you, Mark, would you support, then, that this is something that we start to allow happening within our community area, in residential areas?
Well, I, uh, Mary, I think you got to-
Sue is good.
I, I think you got to weigh out the pros and the cons.
Well, and, and I think that's kind of where we're at right here tonight, you know? This is difficult.
Right.
This is very, very difficult.
Right.
But, um, and while we, we all try to think, "Why are we in this situation?" Well, I don't know that any of us really have all the facts to be able to make that determination, but what I do know is, I don't know that this community would be very receptive to finding poles as such placed in residential areas that's going to allow the competition here then, too, to be able to offer that same kind of service at a rate that is certainly better.
Right.
So, you know, I understand what you're saying. I get what, you know, where you're coming from with all this. But I don't know, you know, it's, it's tough.
Right.
Because, like I say, it's, what's, what's right for this community. We, we're very proud of a community in, in the residential areas, and I've commented that lately, as, as you drive through Norfolk, more and more, we're seeing folks really working on their homes, inside, outside, both. So I, I don't know. It's, again, it just comes back to, what's fair for the goose has got to be fair for the gander, too.
Amen.
So, I didn't mean to cut you off, I just asked-
Nope, nope, that is all I needed to say. I just, I, I know it's helped us, and so I just-
Sure. I get it.
All right, thank you.
I understand. Thanks, Mark. Anyone else that wants to come forward and speak to?
Russ Wilcox, um, quick thought, big picture. Uh, as I've been sitting back and listening, I've kind of been following this thing over the last week or so, as it's materialized. And it makes me, I was so pleased to hear Shane talk about the importance of taking a hard look at the code. Um, one of the things I get concerned about on this type of deal is from an economic development perspective, and big-picture, long-term stuff. And I, Sue, I appreciate your comments about, you know, I don't know if I'd want that in my backyard. Unfortunately, historically, Norfolk has a little bit of a reputation at times for, as it relates to economic development initiatives and, and progress, saying that, "Well, I sure, I would like to do that, but I don't want that in our backyard." Um, so I agree with you, tough decisions, appreciate the work you're doing on this. I would just ask that, as a community, we take a hard look, and I, I think that's, I think, I hear a commitment from city staff, to take a hard look at the, at the codes that we have and, and the way in which we govern these types of things, because the thing I think we don't want to do is get into a position where we start to minimize choice. We start to minimize services that are available. Um, and I know there are tall towers and those kind of things, or call it, I guess, I don't even know what to call it anymore, it's a tower, a pole, whatever it is.
Struck, hollow, whatever.
A thing.
Yeah.
Uh, but that we're, that we're taking a hard look at that, because there, the other side of that is that we get ourselves in a position where we don't have the services that other communities have, um, because we're concerned that somebody doesn't want that in their backyard. And I, I get it, I understand that. Uh, we just, hard decisions, please look at this from a big-picture perspective, too, and say, you know, "What do we need to do from a greater good perspective?" So, anyway, that'd be my thought. Thank you, Sue, for your comment, too, on that. I understand that these are tough things, but we need to, as a community, think big-picture.
You bet. I appreciate that, too, Russ. Any questions for him? Okay. Anyone else that wants to come forward and speak to this? How about you, Citizens 101? Not so much, huh? All right. If no one else, I think we're ready to move forward, then. Um, the process here is going to be that I'm going to close this hearing, and we're going to have, I'm going to ask Clint to do an explanation of how we move forward, with what possibly are some of the different resolutions that have been suggested us. So, you're on.
Looking, excuse me, looking at item 20 on the agenda, uh, there is a resolution that is there for your introduction and consideration. And in following the provisions of the city code that deal with appeals regarding conditional use permits, you'll see three versions of that, of, of, of that resolution. The first version, which is 2434A, reverses the planning commission decision regarding the conditional use permit. Uh, the second version-
Okay, now, that being said-
Yes.
Take the counsel with you. Everybody understand what you're saying there, okay?
We're on closure 20, Sid.
Yes. And, and so if, and then the second one deals with a reversal of the planning commission decision. So if you, if you vote for condition, or version A, you're voting to sustain the identical action that can, that the-
No.
What?
Wait a minute. This lady over here is disagreeing with you.
Version A is to reverse.
Version A is to reverse.
Oh, I'm sorry. 24, I'm sorry, version A reverses. So that means that there is no permit granted if you were to reverse it. B affirms. So B says that you keep the resolution passed by the planning commission, and all of, any of the conditions that are listed in there, identical to the way that they are, okay? And then version C, um, provides for modification of the planning commission, I'm sorry, modification of the planning commission decision. And what I put in that resolution for your consideration is, you'll see all of the conditions that were there. So if you wanted to, um, and then, so if you wanted to change some of the- So if you wanted to, and then, so if you wanted to change some of those, we'd have to go through the process of voting to change what was the condition, or you'll see some blanks at the end of it. You could add additional, you could add additional items for that. The last thing I'll say, and then I'll be quiet, is that another option that you have available, if, it would be to, to table the resolution and to kind of do what the planning commission does with conditional use permits. They, they table the resolution, they routinely go back and have a subcommittee process that generates what they want to do and that comes forward to the council. If, especially if they're setting conditions or modifying conditions or whatever. So I think those are the options that, that you have and, and so ultimately, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Counsel, any questions at all here? Have Clint, after explanation of?
So Clint, how familiar are you with the conditional use permit that's issued here right now? I guess as far as a few factual things. I'm looking at it, I, and I flipped item C because that has what the conditions are. The, it says minimum required setbacks in landscaping from adjacent property lines shall be 14 feet. I mean, the presentation kind of tells me that that is, it's, is not actually...
14 feet.
I mean, is that accurate or not? Or is that, staff want to address that? Or how familiar are you guys with that? The other, the other one, it talks maximum height, that the communications tower shall be 75 feet, including all attachments to the pole. So is this a 75 footer? It looks like the attachments are taller than 75. I mean, the picture that I look at looks like there's attachments above the pole. So is the pole shorter than 75 or is the pole 75 and then attachments on to it?
We believe, without actually climbing it and measuring it, we believe the pole is approximately 70 feet and it has an attachment on it. And Mr. Shomar would be able to describe this in great detail, I'm sure. The attachment of the three-way antenna, for lack of better words, is two to three feet.
It's probably somewhere in the neighborhood of three to four feet.
Three to four feet. That's what we were told. And when the planning commission went back and tabled this, they looked at these issues and put them down in black and white for your review. There was some review to that. We did not actually climb the pole and measure it though. But based on the height of the pole and as Mr. Shomar described, MPBD's process of putting it in, the 10% plus two, all that was validated and we, we trust that it was put in appropriately because MPBD put the pole in.
So that answers my question regarding the height. What about the side yard? Minimum required setbacks in landscaping for adjacent property lines?
Councilman Langy, I'll take that one. I actually got that from Tom Shomar when we were going through the conditions in 27-284, is it? That lists all of the setbacks. And he went out and measured, that is an actual setback that it is currently today. So that's where we got the 14 feet.
The question I have though is setback from where?
The property line.
Okay, so it's 14 foot on to the privately owned property?
Correct.
Okay.
That would be the sideline. Correct.
Okay, so what I'm looking for is consideration of resolution number 2015-34A, B, or C. Is that a true statement?
Well, no, it was D. It was A, B, C, and D, correct?
C is one we make the...
C is the modification. No, they said D was the table, yeah.
Which would just be an option.
Yeah, so I'm looking at A, B, C, and D.
Okay. So, we're not acting on the resolution, we're just...
I think that, excuse me.
Yeah, no, we're just looking if that's what you would choose to give them.
No, I'm not suggesting that, I'm just saying that's what was...
Actually, I think that if you were to table it, you're tabling all of them until the time that you come back and then you still have A, B, and C available to you. It just tries to give you the options that the code sets out to reverse, affirm, or modify.
All right. Clint, just a point of clarification, that when you look at the cup application, it applies for utility pole, which we couldn't do. I mean, utility pole is defined as 35 feet. The resolutions, though, seek a permit for communications tower, right? That's, that's the way I'm reading it?
Yes.
Okay. So the resol, okay, resolution was changed from the time of the application from utility pole to communications tower.
Well, that would make sense though, because initially it would have just been a pole in '04. And then if you're changing first, trying to look for additional use...
Well, I'm talking about, I'm talking about the most recent application for the...
But I mean, that's probably, but if you're going with a CUP now, you would probably then say that it's a...
Because it wasn't an application in 2000.
No, but...
Yeah, but it...
If you look at, what we've listed tonight, '04, that would have just been stated as a util, to, to work within the code requirement, it would have just been a utility pole, whereas now, obviously, with the CUP, I know there wasn't, but it's been state, you know what I mean? As you follow the facts, 35-foot pole has some extensions on it, obviously. Now it's, if you're applying for your conditional use permit, like we're looking at here, you then would want to state it differently because it's a different, the pole has changed. Yeah, so...
Well, and I, I think that there really is no, as I understand the code, and I, I didn't, as I understand the code, there are, there are two things there. One is that, I don't know how that got changed from the application, but there's no way for the planning commission to grant a conditional use for a pole. The only thing they can grant a conditional use for is a communications tower. So I think, I think that's the, that's the issue, that, that the pole, a pole has to be 35 foot, in, in my reading of, of the code. The, the other thing that I think is, is present there, which, I don't know, I mean, this is all on the fly as we're sitting here, but I think when, when we talk about, if I can digress just to something that was talked about as I continue to read these things...
Sure, yeah.
I think that one of the, one of the other points is when we talk about a structure, we talked about the definition of a structure, and it talked about not including driveways, sidewalks, or surfacing. And it did say, or utility poles. It said, or public items such as utility pole. So, you know, I think who owns that pole makes a difference if it, if there's anything to that structure. And I don't mean to digress with that, but I was just making some notes and continuing to read them as they went here and I, maybe I missed that, maybe that was talked about. But that's it.
So what did you just say there?
Well, I just was looking at the structure. When we were talking about the structure, I thought the statement was that a utility pole is, a, a structure does not include utility poles, okay?
Okay, yeah.
I thought that was the structure. That's not what the definition in 27-2 says. The definition says, a structure does not include a public item such as a utility pole.
Okay.
So it depends on who owns the utility pole.
I got it. So gentlemen, is someone ready to make some sort of a consideration of the resolution 2015-34A, B, or C?
I guess, one question that I would have, and Valerie, you, you probably haven't had the opportunity and/or staff, how are these things being handled in other Class I cities? Do we know? Have we made, I mean, since this appeal was, was made to it, have we contacted anybody to see what, you know, what the, the Columbuses, Fremonts? We're not, we're not unique. I don't think we, you know, the Fremonts, the Grand Islands, the Carneys, how are they being handled there? Maybe, maybe we are the first case that this has occurred in the, in the Midwest.
I have not contacted any of our sister cities and we sure can absolutely do that. I mean, if, if you wanted us, if you wanted to table and have us do that, we sure could. My experience would say that we're probably not unique and we're probably, this has probably been dealt with before in some fashion and a limited basis. And most of our rules and regulations, when you really drill down on them in our comparable cities, are very similar, if not identical, in many circumstances. So, you know, we always, we always get accused of being the hardest city to do business in, and I just left the conference where every, every city administrator I talked to gets the same accusation in their own communities. But this is exactly why we have process. You know, we have process so we can vent, we can vet the issues and we can talk about the, the consequences, or lack thereof, of the issue in front of us. So this is exactly what the conditional use permit is designed for. So we can, I have not done that, Councilman, but we could sure do that and I could give you that report back. I don't, I'd hate to tell you, we're absolutely the same as city, Columbus and Fremont, because I'm not sure we are, but I would say we're probably pretty similar.
Well, I guess that, that's kind of what's driving me here to strongly consider making a motion of, of tabling this because, again, you hear it and, and I hear it sometimes more often from, from some subcontractors and developers that say, we're a tough town to build in, whether that's accurate or not. It may be that they have, have had interventions with, with particular persons and not necessarily the entities that way. And, you know, again, I, I don't figure that we're, we're unique to the Midwest. I, I don't think this is the only town in, in this portion of the state, you know, that, you know, we have quite a few Class I cities around us. Some of them are, are different in, in terrain in so much as if Mr. Shomar were, were to be doing a 35-foot pole on a, on a hill that was, that had predominance of 20-foot clear all the way around in the area, or, or 40-foot clear all the way around in the area, suddenly, suddenly you have a pole sitting on, on a mound that is, you know, it's, I caught something, we were talking on the Internet about one of the persons that was fighting a, an entity for being able to put a United States flag up and he wanted to run this huge flag on up. The entity said no, because zoning said no, and, and he ended up putting it on up after he built, after he invested considerable amount of money in building a mound of dirt that brought it on up and his flagpole was, in, in that case, I think was 35 or 40 feet tall, but it sat on a mound of dirt that was 30 to 40 feet tall, so...
Sounds nice.
Understood. I, I think, you know, when I spoke about clarity of the code, I was talking about definition clarity and trying to describe some future technologies and how the, how those technologies are applied, but not process clarity. I think process clarity is important here and I think our process is fairly clear. I mean, I can't imagine, again, I'll repeat, but I can't imagine our community wouldn't want some sort of process in front of them in order to cite poles of this magnitude. That's, that's my own personal opinion, because there's other competitors out there and if these started to proliferate across our community, I would imagine that the elected officials would have quite a few citizens concerned about that. I don't know what your gut check is on that, but that'd be mine, just in the regulatory part of my...
I, I would concur with that statement, you know, that, yeah, it's, this is something, you know, our, our code is held, 2000 and the last time that it was reviewed, I know we're, you know, we're in the process here now, but our code is over, over 10 years old. Am I accurate on that?
Yes. Comprehensive plan, right?
You know, and things have changed tremendously in that, in that time, yeah, comprehensive plan. But, and, and so, yeah, I, I think we want to be able to, to regulate where they, where they go and, as they proliferate across the, across the city, so...
You know, sorry, Councilman, but as I sit here, I can remember sitting on the planning commission and certainly the electrical codes, many of those are, how's that work? I mean, they're handed down by...
Yeah.
I mean, and I know, I know Shane's saying, don't go there, Mayor, don't go there. And I get why, but my point is, at least that's always a starting block, because obviously there's always some changes or...
Sure. We have the International Code Series, Mayor, to ask you, answer your question directly and so do all the other first-class cities. It's a state code that's handed down to us and it's adopted through the state process and then we update it. In fact, there's legislation being considered right now to keep that within a short, tight window of two years only.
See, and, and I...
For all first-class cities across the whole state, not only first-class cities, but potentially even counties.
I think where I'm going with this though is, two years from now, I believe this technology will have changed again. It's just constantly changing. So as we talk about what it is and how it is that we're going to deal with it today, that's where, and I appreciate what Russ is saying, but we got to think about tomorrow too, because, I don't know, Councilman Langy, I kind of like your idea for us to be able to have some good, hard conversation about really what are others doing and how are they looking at it and what does the future look like for...
Well, I think you make a good point of seeing what the future looked like, but the future's gearing towards wireless. It is. I mean, not right now, but I've got, I've got four kids at home, the two boys are probably watching Monday Night Football and the, my daughters got mad and they went and turned Netflix on and probably watching a Disney movie.
Sure.
And that's streaming live.
Right.
You know, which we didn't do a year ago.
Right.
So, we're all sitting here right now with iPhones and iPads and the data, the broadband that is required now in our communities has changed drastically since these codes were introduced. So we're moving forward, it's, it's, and, and to move forward, we have to look like, just like you're saying, we've got to be able to regulate it and make sure that it's, you know, right for our community. But it's going there. I mean, it just is. That's just the way of the West and then how, how it looks and how it looks for Norfolk, Nebraska, you know, we don't know. But, you know, we got to take steps to ensure that we're not left behind and we, we're not just like every city, we're better than the other cities, you know, we want to excel and maybe that, you know, and that's going to be broadband services. Now, this is a, this is an issue, situation here where we've got an issue of how, you know, we got to dissect through everything that happened from '04 to now. So, but if you're looking at just future and everything moving forward, there's going to be more towers. I mean, the ones you have now, you don't notice, because they're on top of buildings. They're on top of a water tower, you know, which is going to become a tower, you know, when it comes down. So it's just changed, because that's all that was required for broadband from, and I'm not an expert on this at all, but from my, from what I can understand, from that point till now, now when I'm trying to stream live and so are my neighbors, the service that is required is much greater. You know, you're using a lot more data in your home right now than you did five years ago. Every time when you have your cell phone on, your iPad on, your TV on, now you have smart TVs, when they're on, it's requiring a lot more wireless service. And how do we get to that point is what we have to work on and is it, is it going to be underground lines? Is it going to be cable? Is it going to be Telebeep with, you know, data transferred from towers? Is it going to...
That's my question.
You know, so we're, we have to take all that into account moving forward. Obviously, the city of Norfolk, people want options. We can't limit those options to just one provider. We've heard that from more than one person here tonight. So I think you just got to take that all into account as we move forward and then what's the best answer? This, we have to, is, what's the best answer moving forward in Norfolk is different than kind of what's being asked of tonight, because now we're looking at a conditional use permit from, so we just have to be able to move forward and I don't know, you know, the planning, planning zone obviously took a hard look at this and voted on it, like they think it said they voted six to three, I'm not sure, I think that's what...
Yeah.
And, and they did provide, my computer died, we've been here a while, so my computer died, I mean, so I can't read that.
Look, look it up on your phone.
So with that...
I, if I may, Mayor, I, you know, what you're describing, Councilman, is some, almost like the Wild West in, in this, maybe this particular theater of technology, that's, I'd submit to you though, that's why process, public process is going to be very important to regulate the Wild West in some fashion, to allow that there's some semblance of neighborhoods. That's why you have the, the neighborhood here in opposition, I suspect, is because of the process. You want to have a process to be able to engage in the discussion and to be able to move forward as a community. And without that process, then I think the Wild West becomes even wilder.
Well, I think, I think I agree with you, I agree with you, Shane. And what I'm, we're, this, this process, this issue has brought us to this point.
Right.
You know, so, so what's the best answer? A, B, or C, or D? You know, the best discussion out of this situation? I don't know.
My, my question is, Shane, on our city administrator, on this conditional use permit, they're seeking a permit for a communications tower, is it going to be a communications tower or have we determined that it's actually a pole? Because if it is indeed, if it, and the, the question here is, if it is indeed going to be a pole... the question here is, if it is indeed going to be a pole, the language is wrong in the resolution, and I, for one, would not want to vote on language in a resolution that was incorrect.
I believe it's going to be a communications tower, frankly, and that's what I think it is, because, again, the only way to get to the conditional use permit, in my understanding of the code, is you've got to designate it or define it as a communications tower, because there is no process. And that's, again, where the clarity of the definitions and, and, and the transitions of, of the last 10 years become important, and where we're going is the future. We've got to have some clarity in the code as far as the definition process. But for tonight's purposes, my own personal opinion is, you'd have to call it a communications tower if you wanted to move forward.
That's what it says here in the resolution.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, the resolution does, the application called it a utility.
Yeah, the application called it a pole. The resolution calls it a power.
The condition to use permit was pressed together, the language in the condition to use permit was pressed together through staff and Planning Commission Subcommittee discussions, and then obviously through the Planning Commission process as a whole, and then that's how we got to define it as a communications tower.
Basically, because there is no conditional use permit that's provided for in the code for a pole.
For a pole, yeah. So, that, that was the only way that Mr. Schommer could be successful, really, with, with the process, or at least have an opportunity to be successful, is to define it as such.
Don't everybody speak at once, but somebody speak, please. What would your choice be?
I guess, as I look at the decisions before us tonight, and I agree with whatever, what was said about the importance of the process moving forward for general policy, but we have to make a decision. The three options, four options we have, I guess, in my opinion, we're probably most ready to take up C or D, and I think, going back to Councilman Langy, some Councilman Langy's questions about the modification version, version C, that we might need some time to look further at that, make sure that we're fully prepared to stand behind any modifications we would make tonight. So, I, with all that said, probably most comfortable with option D, if you will, in taking some timetableing and taking some time to look at this further. That's my opinion.
Is that a motion for, from you, Councilman?
I just wanted to say that I, I kind of agree with Shane. We need to decide on this.
The, the Planning Commission already passed this. They've kind of set the rules here. We do need to fix this, so it's not right. We need to, from here on, modify it, get it right, and, and make sure it's done the next time. But for this time, I, I just think that it's there. He did everything he could to make it the way we told him to. The, the staff told him to do this, to do this, and to apply for this, and, and I thought, even heard where they made him pay three times the money to do it, or whatever. So, I think he's done everything he can. So, I think we should go through this and get this one done, and then start working on it very seriously. That's my opinion.
I don't necessarily disagree with that, but there are some questions about what's written in here, that maximum height shall be 75 feet. Again, it's a strange situation, because the, what we're approving a permit for has already been done, and we don't know if that even matches at this point in time.
And I, and I agree with you totally on that. The only thing is, it's already done, and it's there, and we got to get it approved one way or the other, and then start from scratch and fix it from then on, I think. So, I mean, if we start changing, now we're lowering or raising the height of the pole, it's already done. So, we got to act on it, I think.
Well, I guess, not to be negative about it or anything, but I don't think because an action is already incorporated that it makes it, okay, because somebody did something, then we're going to say that it's okay.
Yeah.
There's consequences for everything that we do or don't do that way, and whether, whether the questions were, you know, none of us up here were privy to those questions that Mr. Schommer had with staff or anything that way. And sometimes you ask questions regarding what you're expecting is going to be answered that way. That's more, probably more times than not, if, if, you know, and, and staff sometimes is, I hate to say naive enough, but we're all trusting society, and so we say, "Well, he's got good intent and everything involved in this that way." So, that's why I have a problem with saying, "Yes, this is okay here," not knowing, one, the particulars as, as far as, as the height, you know, if, it's, it's, I heard, yeah, it's the 10% rule plus two foot. Well, was that, you know, was, is that where it's at? And more importantly, is, are the additions that are on top of it, you know, I'm, I'm looking from the ground at them and saying, "Are they two and a half foot, or are they five foot, or what are they?" You know, that's why I am still inclined that I, I believe this deserves tabling action, one, so that we can answer those questions, and two, so that we can see what other communities are doing that way. Because, and, and other communities are using wireless, and I don't believe that, that an action tonight is going to generate an action on, on Mr. Schommer's part to be out there tomorrow morning with his pole-climbing jacks on, climbing on up there with a, with a chainsaw and hacking this thing off at 35 feet, if it were, if it were negative that way, so.
And I, and I don't disagree with you, but I'm just saying, staff told him to do this, and this, and this, and go through this process. That's where we're at right now.
Well, and again, it's, I, I would tell you that many times it's the personal interpretation of what you do or don't hear from staff as to what you want to hear from them also. And I'm not saying, you know, we all listen differently, and Mr. Schommer may, you know, in his mind clearly believes that staff told him what, what he expressed to us here today. But that isn't verba, you know, that's, that's why we have, well, anymore it's not paper, because it's electronic, but, you know, that's, that's why we have those things written on down, so.
And I don't disagree with you either, David. Precedence does hold a lot of weight in this discussion, I think, to me, and I think Mr. Schommer made a good faith effort to follow everything that he was told. But what, the decision we make tonight also creates a precedence, to a certain extent, in what we allow and not allow. And so, that's what I'm saying, I want to make sure that we do it right, we do it right.
So, did you make?
The other thing that, you know, and I heard the, I hear precedents all the time. That's, that's the one thing that's unique about conditional use permits, are that they are conditional for that application, you know, so I, I always have a hard time when people tell me that, "Well, you gave them that conditional use permit, and you established precedents here, so I get to do it also." My conditions may be, you know, they're, they're apt to be different, because they aren't on that same piece of property.
I, yeah, I, I understand that. I think, I think to a certain extent, though, it, it's a record that's created, and others will look at that. So, I, my point being that I don't think we want to rush into something that we may not be prepared for.
I have one more question.
Sorry, Mayor.
No, that's quite all right.
Because there is discussion whether to go forward with B, per se, or D as another option. But if we went with B, and, and it did not get approved, or didn't have enough votes, what is the actual result of that? Basically, is it A, I guess? Does that sound right, Clint?
Well, we got to...
If, if somebody gave the option of going with option B, and we voted on it, and it did not pass as option B, what would be the result?
If you vote on option, excuse me, if you vote on option B, and that does not fail, that does not pass, it fails, then it's back to the council to consider option A, version A, or version C.
C.
So, you keep working your way through it until you get something that you...
Or D.
Or D.
Always, yeah, or D.
Huh.
Okay.
Do we, do we have a motion from you, Councilman Josh?
I would move to table.
Second that.
All right. We have a motion with a second to table Resolution 2015-34. Any further discussion?
The only thing I would have, sorry, would be, if we do go to T, D, which would then be Subcommittee, you know, look at this, what's that Subcommittee going to look like?
Would it be a Subcommittee, or would it be staff coming back? I mean, why does it have to be Subcommittee?
I had heard Subcommittee.
I said Subcommittee earlier.
Yeah.
May I explain, please? I, I mentioned Subcommittee, because I think direction needs to come from, but the staff can do that, but you're only going to get presented what you think the staff is interested in, and really, our opinion doesn't matter. This is a decision for the council to make, and so I think for that to be a meaningful discussion and needs to be driven by, by the council. That's my personal opinion. We could put in there anything that you all want to put in there, and then you can bring that back. If you do it as a Subcommittee, you could bring that back and see if those members that are not on the Subcommittee want to embrace that or not. So, that's, that's why I said that. That makes any sense?
Can I ask, as long as we're continuing conversation here, if we're having such conversa, I mean, there's a lot of different thoughts that have had to cross your minds as well, on what maybe we could have done differently, what maybe Mr. Schommer could have done differently. There's some of those questions that, you know, okay, if it was brought down to a height of, what if it was placed in, you know, what ifs? So, could he be a part of that conversation, too, if in fact we were to, or is it a dead mute thing after the Planning Commission?
I think that a Subcommittee of the Council, I think Shane's wanting to talk, maybe I should let him talk.
Speak.
Yeah, absolutely, I guess, to answer your question, he could be a part, anyone could be part of that Subcommittee as, as invited, per the elected officials of that Subcommittee. So, you know, those kind of conversations can happen. They also...
They?
You, Mayor and Council, could also just hear, we can gather the facts that you want to know from our sister cities out there, to the best of our ability.
Well, I think that's a good starting point.
And then we can present those in open session and have the same discussion with the full body. I mean, there's nothing, that's great as well. So, I, I mean, it's really to your flavor. If you want to get deeper, deeper into the code and start to do some individual work in definitions, and then I would suggest a Planning Commission Subcommittee and a Council Subcommittee to dive deep into the code, once, because we're going to have to do that anyway. But if it's just to solve the version A, C, or ABC, and gather the additional information from the sister cities, we can prepare a report and bring that back to the full council.
Well, I guess, that's what I was anticipating. I wasn't anticipating a Subcommittee that, you know, because I like to see these conditions, you know, when I was on the Planning Commission, I liked to see the, the conditions being developed during the Planning Commission meeting at that time, and the only reason that it went to a second meeting was because it wasn't, oh, can't think of her name, she wasn't that quick at typing. She didn't have a typewriter along with her there. We didn't have a written version at that time. And that, and that's why, you know, we went, you know, it always got tabled, and we went to a, a, a second meeting, because I, I, you know, I think conditions need to be developed by this entire body, if, if that's where we go, and out in the public, you know, because otherwise, the, the, the misnomer out there is that, "Well, those guys are doing it behind closed doors."
Absolutely, Dan, that's absolutely...
You know, and I was more or less looking for facts, you know. I, I want facts, you know, it does Fremont have this condition? Maybe they don't. You know, they're a little bit hillier than we are. I, I would, you know, I would guess that, that Grand Island probably has run into this that way, due, due to the, the rather level playing field that they're on there, so.
And, you know, I don't think we want to give the impression that we're just kicking the can down the road on a difficult decision, but I think all that you said speaks to the importance of evaluating what's going on in these other communities, and, and taking that input into a Subcommittee process or otherwise, to make a decision that, that's good for everyone involved, and to, and fair to all the parties involved, because Mr. Schom, Schommer needs a decision, and neighborhood needs a decision. I think it can still be done in a somewhat timely process.
All right. So, we have a motion on the floor to table that's been seconded. Are you ready to vote? Any, any other further discussion? Please vote.
Voting in favor to table Resolution 2015-34. Councilmembers Granquist, Langy, Merrill, Clausen, Muren, Moaning, file voting against the motion. Councilman Faust, motion to table carries.
Gentlemen, if I may say, very respectfully done. I appreciate that. Again, you've laid a lot of information in front of these elected officials, and I will tell you that certainly the staff will take the lead here in getting some of the information that is requested by the elected officials, and I bet we're going to be seeing you again. So, thanks for your time tonight, and again, I, I really appreciate the very professional way it was handled. So, thank you all. So, 101, are you going to continue forward with us?
Yeah.
We're going to move on to a public hearing to amend the City Code Land Use Matrix, Section 27-401, to change provisions including permissible uses related to fertilizer and places of assembly. So, I'm going to open this public hearing, and Val, are you speaking to this one?
Yes.
You're going to have to speak loud, Val, because it's hard to hear you.
So, this is to, we found inconsistencies in the land use matrix.
Okay.
And that related to agriculture fertilizer hazardous retail, and then also the same category, just in a different place, fertilizer agriculture hazardous retail. And we're just making those consistent with each other, so that's our request.
So, a little bit of housekeeping is what we're doing?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions for Val regarding this? If not, it is a public hearing. Is there anyone that wants to come forward and speak to this issue at all? If not, then I'm going to look for a Planning Commission report.
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on October 20, 2015, to consider amending the City Code Land Use Matrix, Section 27401, to change provisions therein, including permissible uses related to fertilizer. The amendment revises inconsistencies in the land use matrix for the following fertilizer categories: agricultural fertilizers, hazardous retail, and fertilizers agricultural hazardous retail. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the amendment on a seven to zero vote.
All right. And with that, I will close this hearing and look for consideration of Ordinance Number 5371, approving that amendment to the City Code Land Use Matrix.
Your Honor, I'd offer Ordinance Number 5371 for consideration.
Second that, Your Honor.
All right. We have a motion with a second. Any further discussion at all? Short title, Beth.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, to amend the land use matrix in Section 27-401, to change provisions therein, including permissible uses related to fertilizer, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
With that, would you please vote?
All Councilmembers voting in the affirmative, Ordinance 5371 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I would move that we suspend the rules and pass this on second and third reading as more or less it's a housekeeping measure.
All right. We have a motion with a second to suspend the rules and pass Ordinance Number 5371 on second and third. If no further discussion, please vote.
All Councilmembers voting in the affirmative, Ordinance 5371 carries on second and third.
All right. And next, we're going to look at Public Hearing 23 and 25, which we're going to open together and have conversation on. First is a public hearing to consider feasibility of an amendment to the present comprehensive plan to change single-family residential to local business district on property located at 306 and 308 North 13th Street, and as well, same, at the public hearing at the request of Sean and Lee Furman for a zone change from R1, single-family residential, to C1, local business, on property located at 306 and 308 North 13th Street. With that, I will open each public, each of the public hearings, and Val, you're speaking to both of these to get us started. Am I correct?
Yes.
All right.
And we probably want to bring up the comprehensive plan first. And we probably want to bring up the comprehensive plan first, because in the publication, we requested an amendment to local business district rather than commercial, which technically commercial is the designation in the comprehensive plan, and not local business district, that is a zoning.
Okay.
However, commercial and business are not at odds with each other, and during planning commission, no questions were raised by any planning commissioner, city staff, citizens, and there were no objections raised either during that time.
Okay. All right. Okay, this is a public hearing, is there anyone that wants to come forward and speak to this, maybe give explanation for?
Good evening, my name is Sean Furman, owner of the property. What we would like to do is have the zoning change from C1 to, I mean, from R1 to C1. The purpose of that would be to make a building there. 81 Auto Glass is interested in expanding his operation. Currently, he is a mobile business, he's been in business for four years, Jason Furman, and currently, there is just a small little house on 308, and 306 is vacant.
Ah, yes, okay.
Okay? So, we feel that that is a underused property. We could utilize it better, expand, you know, the, the neighborhood, economy, whatever, by utilizing that property, by construction, constructing a building to make that happen.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Furman, while he's in front of you here? Okay. Appreciate your coming out. Anyone else that wants to speak to this, as it is a public hearing here? If not, I'm gonna close the hearing then, and we're gonna look for consideration of ordinance number 5372, which would be amending, I'm not, oh, speak.
Sorry. The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing at the request of Sean and Lee Furman, to consider amending the comp plan from single-family residential to the commercial, as discussed by Val. The applicant applied for the rezone of the property, which requires an amendment to the comp plan, and the planning commission recommends approval on a seven to zero vote. And then, the planning commission also held a public hearing on the zone change request from R1 to C1, and the planning commission recommended approval of the request on a seven to zero vote as well.
Are we good? Okay, all right. So, with that, then, what we're gonna do is look at consideration of ordinance number 5372, amending the city's comp plan from single-family residential to commercial, local business district, at the property located at 306 and 308 North 13th Street.
Your Honor, I would offer for consideration ordinance number 5372.
Second.
All right, we have a motion with a second. Any discussion, any questions at all, Council? If not, a short title.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the future land use map of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in force and effect, and providing for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, ordinance 5372 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I move we suspend the rules and pass ordinance 5372 on second and third.
Second.
We have a motion with a second to suspend the rules and pass ordinance number 53 second, 5372 on second and third. Again, if no further discussion, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, ordinance 5372 carries on second and third.
All right, and finally, is consideration of ordinance 5373, approving the zone change from R1, single-family, to C1, local business, on property located at 306 and 308 North 13th Street, as requested by Sean and Lee Furman.
Your Honor, I'd move consideration of ordinance 5373 on first reading. Second.
Okay, we have a motion with a second. Short title, Beth.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and providing for publication of the ordinance in pamphlet form.
Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, ordinance 5373 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I'd move to suspend the rules and approve ordinance number 5373 on second and third.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion with a second to suspend the rules and pass ordinance 5373 on second and third. If no discussion, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, ordinance 5373 carries on second and third.
All right, couple other items here, one being consideration of approval for staff to advertise for proposal to develop housing on city-owned property located on Oak Street. I'm looking, all right. Appreciate that. Mr. Lyle Light, you're gonna speak to us on this?
I will, Mayor and Council. You know, it's facing some interesting and challenging hard decisions, but isn't it wonderful if the 101 class can attend tonight to see the, see the system in action?
I think they deserve an A+ for those that are still with us.
They're not all this short, so don't, don't get your hopes up.
Yeah, get going.
It appears as though they went down to 55.5, I think.
Well, this decision should hopefully be an easy one. Is your computer still functioning? If you're, if you can look at the attachments, the city is, owns the properties in the 700 block of North Oak Street, that for you and for the folks at home that can't see it, is in the northwest, excuse me, northeast portion of town. There's about four parcels there, and we've had it for, had that property for, created in 10, 20 years, it sounds like, a long time. With the new addition of the, with the new, new industry moving to town, and the tight shortage on housing already, we would like to sell this property. It's already paved, and has water and sewer hookups there, it's ready to be built on. We are strongly encouraging any builder or developer, whoever, to come put, come give us a proposal of what they would put on the land, the price that they pay the city, the timeline that they would, they would do that in, and we will consider selling it to them. If we can scroll to the next picture, please. That's a closer image there of the Oak Street and, and property, it's just on a little bit west, excuse me, east of First Street. The current zoning is listed there in this map, R1 and R3. Val is also working with me, or we're working with Val on-
Oh, really?
On advertising this, so if you feel, want to jump in anywhere, Val, by all means, feel free to do so. The timeline we're looking at is hopefully advertise it pending your permission soon, next couple days. We'll open the proposals on the 25th, and hopefully have results for you for the December 7th meeting. Following that, we'll have the remonstrance period for the sale of city property. They, purchaser, proposer can hopefully make plans throughout the winter and produce something in the spring. With that, Val, do you have anything to add? Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
So, what you're doing within that proposal is they are committed to building housing?
Right.
Okay.
That is correct. We want to avoid somebody buying the property and just sitting on it.
Right.
Because we recognize the significant need for housing. So, since we're the owners of it, and we want to help with that housing issue, we want to hear what people have for plans for that property.
And you're gonna hold them to a timeline?
We're gonna hold them to a timeline, that is correct. That's also addressed in here.
Good.
That does include some, some financial encouragement that we don't want to enforce, we just want residential units put in place, but that the incentive is there to make sure we can follow through on it.
And if they don't, the penalties are-
The penalties are outlined in, under, on page two, which would be the third page of the document, the, the general comments, it'd be about a 2% per month, 24% APR interest rate for not, non-performance.
So, folks know that up top?
Sure.
Very good.
If there's folks at home, or anybody in the crowd, or whoever, wants to know more about it, wants to receive a, in, a PDF email to them, feel free to give me a call at the station, right, the-
City of Norfolk.
We are going to post some at the fire station, though, you gotta let me finish.
Way to pull yourself out of that one.
Permits and codes staff say that there's people interested there as well.
Good.
You gotta let me finish.
Anything else for Lyle?
Mayor, I would, I would comment, just for Lyle and Val, and rest of the staff that worked hard on this, this is kind of goes back to what Mr. Wilcox said earlier about thinking out of the box and the big picture. This is unique for, for the city to do something like this, I think, and, you know, addressing our housing shortage, even although it's small, is a step in the right direction, so we're hoping that there's some creative builders out there that'll take us up on that, and, and press the timeline and get us some new homes in town as soon as possible. So, good job.
Good job, Val. Very good. Lyle, thanks for being here.
Depending on how this turns out, there could be future properties as well.
How did we come in possession of this property?
Well, let's see, that well precedes my time.
I know, he knows.
This was, this was a part of the Oak Street reconstruction, and we had to move Oak Street back away from the railroad tracks to get a perpendicular intersection, and this was the property that was excess from that process.
As I remember, it was fairly contentious for a while.
It went a long time.
And Dennis, there was also a trade involved.
There was all kinds of things.
There was a trade involved with a, with another property owner who had bought a portion of the property right next to the railroad at a tax sale, and he owned that, and so we traded some excess property when, when some street right away that he added to a lot he owned someplace else, and we got his property to add to what was left from the street when, when Oak Street was put through there, to be able to put together something sizable enough to make it up.
Did I ask for discussion?
I think we, I think we've owned it about 10 years, and it started 10 years before that.
Yeah, really. All right, are we ready to vote on this? No further discussion, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
All right, and the final item on our agenda is the October sales tax report. Certainly, Randy, if you want to hit the highlights?
Yeah, this is gonna be a report that sounds real similar to last month's report. The 1.5% sales tax is way down compared to the same period last year, all related to the June 2014 hailstorm and all the economic activity that spurred. I expect you'll hear a similar sales tax report for the next four or five months. We had about six, seven months of real high sales tax related to that hailstorm. So, if you look, we had our sales taxes down, 1.5% sales taxes down, over 10%, but we anticipated this at the time we put the budget together. It's very close to what we budgeted, it's within 0.47% of what we budgeted, only $3,100 under budget. Last month, we were actually over budget by about $31,000, so you're gonna see that these things are tracking a lot closer to budget than what they are to last year's numbers for probably, like I say, another four or five months. Answer any questions?
Nope, I think we were well-prepared for all that, Randy, remembering the budget work you were doing, so I appreciate you giving us the update. And again, for everyone that's been here through the evening, thanks for, for joining us, it's been a great discussion, and I guess, Council, if, if you want this, I think it's gonna be necessary, maybe to, Tom, do you want these back? You've done a great job in putting this all together.
Sure, if we keep them, I think they'll be back.
You think they'll be what?
Hopefully, hopefully, the backfillers should be back.
Very good, all right. Thanks very much, we are adjourned, everyone.